Okay. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Directors at Tacoma Public Schools for May 23 to order. Would you please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, sovereign, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the General Counsel please call the roll?
President Viall?
Here.
Vice President Hines?
Here.
Director Winskill?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
And Director Cobb?
Here.
All right. Thank you. We have a full house tonight. So, adoption of the agenda that President would entertain a motion?
I move approval.
Then moved in second. Any questions or comments by members of the board on the agenda? Hearing none? All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. Item number five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Item five-one, approval of the recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Holly Bamford, the Bamford Foundation. Amanda, if you would please.
Yes. Good evening, Board of Directors and community members. It's my pleasure, my name is Amanda Scott-Thomas, I am the Director of the Partnership Office, to read today's or this month's Gold Star Community Partner Award. And as you well know, Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school districts, or school district and the greater Tacoma community. Our partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools knows that we cannot do it alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. For your recommendation today, we have Holly Bamford-Hunt. She's been working proactively and collaboratively with Tacoma Public Schools and numerous community partners to support the work of the Tacoma Whole Child and advance positive youth development in the entire Tacoma community. Her involvement in the community is prevalent and her impact profound. In addition to her role as Director of the Bamford Family Foundation, Holly sits on numerous community boards, including the Children's Museum of Tacoma and the Foundation for Tacoma Students. She has remarkable talent for bringing diverse strands of our community together to coordinate effective and equitable support for young people. Holly's leadership has been especially critical in advancing the Whole Child approach in neighborhoods through her support of Safe Streets Whole Neighborhood Initiative. This work is founded in the belief the Whole Child development, in the end, is about creating positive, inclusive culture and supportive relationships for every child. The initiative seeks to inform and engage neighbors in cultivating the safe, healthy, and nurturing environment for children in our community. Holly has been instrumental in encouraging and advising the development of this initiative. Tacoma is fortunate to have Holly's visionary and collaborative leadership in our community, and today we want to recognize her for the outstanding contribution she's made and thank her for her commitment to improving futures of young people and all of us in the greater Tacoma community. Can we give a hand for Holly Bamford?
Well, thank you so much. I also just want to mention that my mom, Joanne Bamford, is here, the founder of Bamford Foundation. And thank her and my father, Cal Bamford, for their vision in establishing the Bamford Foundation in support of quality of life and thriving individuals, families, and communities in Tacoma and Pierce County. And we're very honored to be a partner with the Tacoma School District and numerous community organizations throughout Tacoma and Pierce County to support access and opportunity in education and in particular, presence of youth voice in our community. And so, we're just very appreciative of this recognition. Thank you.
Holly didn't mention that her dad is a 1962 graduate of Wilson High School. Former classmate of mine. All right. Moving on. Superintendent's report. Item six-one, legislative update. Superintendent Santono.
So, Mr., we all, I think, would agree that we had a rousing legislative round this year. And we are always so fortunate to have Mr. Charles Brown being orchestrator and advocate for Tacoma Public Schools. And he certainly did his magic this year. Charlie, let me take an opportunity to thank you for the work that you do on our behalf. It's pretty amazing. And the way that you get us down there when we need to be and tell us when to leave and tell us where to stand, tell us when to smile, we appreciate it. So, thank you. And I've asked Charlie to kind of give us an update of where we are. Thanks, Charlie.
Well, thank you. And I want to say thanks to all of you, the members of the board, the executive staff, and everyone who is willing to come down to Olympia. I have to say, Superintendent Santono, that when I called you on Saturday morning and said there was going to be a hearing, and you dropped everything you were doing, got down there, and were able to get up in front of the Senate Ways and Means Committee and explain what this bill meant, the 5313, the school levy bill, and what it meant to the school district and to the students and staff. The fact that the Chair of that Ways and Means Committee got up there and publicly apologized to you personally and to what the legislature had done to the Tacoma School District two years ago was really quite phenomenal. So, your willingness to come down obviously means that much. So, thank you as well. So, yes, we did have quite a year this year. So, we put together a little bit of a legislative overview, and I thought we would just walk through this quickly. And then certainly, I'm available at any time to meet with you individually or meet as a group to walk through more details of this legislative overview. And these aren't the only pieces of legislation that went through. There are any number of pieces of legislation that went through dealing with education, as there is just about every year. But this year in particular, it seemed like there was quite a bit going on. The biggest bill was this levy bill, obviously, Senate Bill 5313 that went through in the late hours of the last day of session, about 11 o'clock that night, actually. And what they did was to modify the local levy provisions that had been adopted in 2242 from two years earlier, which is basically the McCleary decision. And rather than saying a dollar fifty per thousand, the legislature agreed to change that up to two dollars and fifty cents per thousand that could be collected, up to a maximum of $2,500 per student for enrichment programs. And I think all of you know that essentially enrichment programs are those programs that a school district chooses to provide for its students that is above and beyond what the legislature has defined as basic education. I think there's always an interesting tug of war going on between the legislature's definition of basic education and what I think a school district's definition of basic education is. And they really are two different things. The legislature's definition of basic education is this little box right over here. And a school district's definition of basic education is a much bigger box because we may need more nurses, we may need more counselors, we may need more wraparound supports for students like you all have chosen to do at a number of different schools and maybe different learning experiences that you do through your innovative schools. And the legislature doesn't necessarily fund all of those things, and so the enrichment programs have to do that. The fact that we're based on a property tax system here in the state for the majority of funding for school districts means that different districts are situated differently as well. The property poor districts have a little bit tougher challenge than the property rich districts. And so, making a change like this that the legislature did at least gives an opportunity for all school districts to raise up to $2,500 per student. It won't start until January of 2020. I know that that's not ideal for all of you in terms of your budget decision-making requirements because you have to start making your budgets now, and they start in the beginning of the or in the middle of the summer. But that's basically how the property tax system works. And so, as of January 2020, we will be able to go up and collect the same amount, the amount of money that our voters have authorized us to do in the local levies that were passed just last year. So, if there's a question on that, I'll be happy to take it. I'll go ahead and move on otherwise. On the K-3 program, as all of you know, there is a requirement in law that we try and reduce the K-3 class sizes. The legislature has recognized over the years that it hasn't fully funded all of those, nor was there adequate space available for K-3. This year, we started out in a position where the legislature was going to be willing to delay that once again, but the Senate decided late in the legislative session that they were not going to want to delay the K-3 class size requirements. That puts a bit of a burden on a number of districts, including Tacoma, because when you have a K-3 class size requirement, there's also a local enrichment levy cost associated with that that I don't think that everyone in Olympia really is fully aware of. So, we argued for the K-3 delay, but we were unable to get it in the end. There's a number of legislators who think that school districts have had time enough to get to a K-3 delay or to get to the K-3 class size requirements. We'll see how that implementation rolls out throughout the state in this coming year. But as of now, this, all districts are going to be required to meet the K-3 class size requirements or risk losing the additional funding that is provided partially by the legislature for K-3. So, we'll deal with that. And I think that what it'll give us an opportunity to do is go back to the legislature and have a more robust discussion on this issue in this coming 2020 legislative session. And I almost kicked myself for even talking about the 2020 legislative session when we just got out of the 2019 legislative session. But there is a lot more work yet to be done. In the budget itself, an 806-page document, as I recall, Section Five of the budget is the education section of the budget. And it starts at about page 260 and runs for several, a number of sections, probably about 100 pages. There's language in there that provides an implicit price deflator for school districts. It's essentially a 2% cost of living increase across the board for the school districts. So, that additional funding is provided by the legislature. Legislature's budget this year, as you might recall, ended up being about a 50, a little over $52 billion budget in the end. And so, they had a lot of carryforward costs in the budget this year that drove some of the spending, but they also were able to get to a point where they were able to spend or provide a little bit more money for school districts. On the special education side of the ledger, we argued for increases in special education. There is a generally accepted number that the school districts are spending over $300 million collectively in special education out of their enrichment money. We argued that special education is basic education, that the legislature needs to support that. I think that most legislators would agree with that. However, finding, you know, that numbers like that gets to be more of a challenge. They did increase spending in special education by about $77 million this year. So, the special education funding factor went from .9609, which had been increased even just last year, up to .995. And then, as part of the discussion and the debate that we were having as a policy matter, the legislature agreed to bifurcate some of the funding for special education so that your students who, school districts that put more special education students into general education at 80% or more will end up getting more funding from the legislature. What the legislature, and I think that the policy advocates are working toward there, is to get more students, special ed students, into general education because the studies show that those students graduate at a higher rate. And I want to particularly applaud the work that the Superintendent of Public Instruction, Chris Reichdahl, did on this issue because he made that a very, a top priority for his administration. And quite frankly, in the end, Tacoma does benefit from that because we do put a lot of our students in the general education system, and we will get rewarded for that with a higher special ed multiplying factor, where in 2021, a student that's in the general education over 80% of the time ends up with a 1.0075 reimbursement rate or matching rate from the state. So, it doesn't seem like it's a lot of money, but when you start talking about the numbers that we're talking about in Olympia for a special education, it does become real money for each of the districts across the state. One area where we didn't enjoy success this year, unfortunately, although it depends on how you look at it, was in school construction arena. We all know that the school construction requires a 60% vote of the electorate to pass a bond for school construction. Those can be very high bars to overcome. And we argued that we should be a simple majority for school construction, just like we are for the local levies. And we were able to get that bill to the floor of the Senate this year. But we were unable to get the two-thirds requirement that it takes to get that bill out of the Senate and over to the House. And then, it would take two-thirds to get it out of the House and put it on a vote, put it at the ballot for the people to vote. It's a constitutional amendment, so the requirements for passage are a little bit different there. When you're amending the Constitution, it takes two-thirds vote of both the House and the Senate before it goes to the people for a vote, which ironically is just 50% of the vote of the people for that. So, I don't think that we should give up. I think that, as I was saying, it depends on how you look at it. We haven't been able to get a bill like that to the floor of either body over the last several years. And we've tried, we've been working on that for about the last six years, and I think that we ought to continue working on that. The next area is the School Employee Benefit Board. As you all might recall, in the McCleary agreement of a couple of years ago, there was agreement to provide a uniform set of benefits for all school employees, healthcare and other benefits, run through a School Employee Benefit Board. This was the year to implement that program. The costs for the program are going to be quite substantial. There's going to be costs to your budget for the local portion of this program because the state has chosen, once again, only to fund the employees that it funds through its definition of basic education, not necessarily our definition of basic education. And therefore, you're going to carry additional costs in the School Employee Benefit Board. This was a fairly rigorously debated topic, although it wasn't necessarily debated as much as in the form of a policy bill. There was a lot of debate about how to structure this, what the costs were actually going to be, whether amendments needed to be made by the legislature. In the end, they chose not to make any amendments to it. It was effectively a collective bargaining agreement between the various bargaining units in education and the Governor's Office through the Healthcare Authority, and the legislature approved it as it is and funded it at $994 per funded unit per month. So, I expect those costs to go quite a bit higher. The Healthcare Authority started out in the $1,170 range for these costs. This 994 was argued that they made some adjustments, they were getting better information, and they were able to get the costs down. I think that you, in your budget, should be planning for higher costs as we go into the coming years, and you should not expect the legislature to bail you out. I think that this is going to be a cost that you're going to have to carry through your local levy enrichment money. And the fact is, when the bill is due, if the legislature hasn't paid it, you're going to have to make up the difference. And so, I just want you all to be aware of what might be coming in the future. There is a study to look at merging the School Employee Benefit Board into the Public Employee Benefit Board. There would be various benefits for doing that, financial benefits for doing that. I think, however, that once this School Employee Benefit Board has gone into place, it's going to be very hard to try and merge it into an existing pool. The public employees, the state employees, may not want the School Employee Benefit Board in their system. The School Employee bargaining units may not want to be a part of a larger State Employee Benefit Board. There's a lot more complicated issues than just merging the two programs together. So, at this point, while that study is underway and is going to be presented back to the legislature next year or the year following, I would simply recommend that you expect that the School Employee Benefit Board to be the way that the system's going to work for the foreseeable future. On school safety, House Bill 1660 moved through the process. I think that was the bill number, and now I'm starting to forget all the bill numbers. 1216, I'm sorry. Moved through the process. That bill, of course, arises out of concerns that we've seen across this state and across the nation with the need for more school security. And it's not so much the buildings themselves as being secure, although, of course, there is a component of that of hardening up buildings, but more of finding out which students might pose a threat and might pose harm to fellow students and identifying who they are, getting early intervention and getting action for those students. And if you can get them early and you know who they are and get some assistance to them, then you don't have to deal with the hardening of the schools through the aftermath of some of these incidents. That legislation essentially provides the framework and the groundwork for school safety. They were unable to fully fund everything that was in that bill in terms of the additional counselors for school districts to do some of the work that we had hoped that they were going to be able to add more counselors, but they weren't able to. So, we'll have to continue funding as much of that as we can in our local enrichment funding. But they do provide more assistance from the Education Service Districts throughout the state, which is going to be a benefit, I think, in the long run for all the school districts of the 295 school districts. At least they have a more central place to go through their ESDs than trying to make their way on their own. There was another piece of legislation, 1660, which I referenced earlier, that did not make it through the process, but as with any good legislator knows, that they can sometimes get what they want by putting the language that they really want in the budget. So, 1660 ended up, provisions of it, in the budget. And it deals with associated student body programs. And I just wanted to bring this to your attention because it's something that kind of sits out there sometimes as a sleeper, these provisions in the budget. The idea here is that the legislature and other studies show that if students are participating in extracurricular activities, they are also more likely to reach graduation, they're more likely to be motivated, they're in a cohort of other students that may be motivated to graduate. And they find that the correlation between having an ASB card and participating in these activities actually gets toward, those students that have the ASB card do participate. And so, there are some provisions in the budget that will require that the school district, each school, publish its ASB card costs and the number of students that have the ASB cards. And if those students are free and reduced lunch qualifying students, how many of them have ASB cards? And how much the, how many of those students are actually participating in ASB? And I raise that with you because it means that each school building, each high school building, is going to have to have on its website all of this information published. It's already required under RCW 28A 325050, but not every district necessarily has as robust a website system where they're updating their websites on a regular basis. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention because there is, there are a number of legislators who are particularly interested in this issue, and I think we're going to see more legislation on this. This reporting requirement by the school districts is just the beginning. The underlying legislation that was being pursued this year would have required that we provide ASB cards at a reduced rate, if not free. And I believe Tacoma does some of this stuff already, but I want to make sure that you're all aware of this, that every student should have an ASB card and that we're going, the legislature's going to be pushing to try and get more students involved in extracurricular activity, which I think this district recognizes is a positive thing. Another piece of legislation that passed this year that is going to have an impact on the school district is House Bill 1599. It's multiple pathways toward graduation. This is a piece of legislation that's been worked on for the last several years where you don't just have the one way of getting to graduation by passing tests, and then you prove that you've mastered it. This provides multiple pathways toward graduation. This will help a number of students moving forward in looking at their high school and beyond plans. And if you are able to demonstrate career and college readiness through one of the eight graduation pathways, options that are available now in this legislation, you will be qualified for graduation. So, that's going to be an issue that the school district is going to want to take a look at here sooner rather than later. And just by the way, so you know, the Governor has finished taking action on all the legislation that passed. Just this past Tuesday was the last day that he had to either veto or sign legislation. There were very few actions, negative actions, that the Governor took this year. I think he was very pleased in the education arena. I think he was very pleased with everything that had happened. And this House Bill 1599 is in line with what he has been working on toward providing more opportunity for students here across the state of Washington. Finally, the Hold Harmless legislation was one that came up late in the legislative session. It's a very big benefit to the Tacoma School District. It essentially was a way of looking at the McCleary legislation from two years ago, determining what school districts had been irreparably harmed by some of the adjustments that had been made in McCleary on a short-term basis and provided additional funding for those school districts. Tacoma School District, as you can imagine, was one of the bigger beneficiaries of that one-time payment from the legislature in the Hold Harmless. And I wanted to make sure that you all were aware, I know you're aware, that there was an additional several million dollars, $5.7 million projected for that, as a result of that legislation for the Tacoma School District on a one-time basis. So, with that, I would be happy to take any questions. It's a rather long report. It's a rather long report. Superintendent Santoro, I apologize, but it was a rather long legislative session.
Questions or comments? I want to start first. I want to thank Charlie, as Carlo did, for all of his hard work. We are really blessed in Tacoma Public Schools to have him represent us in Olympia for the last seven years. We get things that other people don't because of his ability to work the legislature. He's been down there since the early nineteen nineties when we first became acquainted. And it's hard work, and it's a roller coaster ride. I've done it. I was the governor's lobbyist for five years and goes up and down and sideways, and you never know what's going to happen. But he's been a great asset to us, particularly in ability to work with leadership on both sides of the aisle. And that's something that very few of our governmental relations people have the ability to do that. And I know at the end, we were really concerned about getting a whole bunch of things, and I happened to have the opportunity to talk to the Speaker of the House, who's been a longtime friend, and he just said, you know, we'll take care of it. And he did. So he has been very supportive of, we're going to miss him as Speaker because he thinks Tacoma Public Schools are absolutely top-notch and was there very, and that had to do with the relationships that were built and then that ability at the eleventh hour this time to get the levy fixed rather than what happened to let, you know, we thought we had a fix a year ago and it went sideways literally at midnight and this time. And I just appreciate all of the hard work. And, you know, a lot of people have clients and they, you know, serve them as clients, but Charlie has an amazing commitment to us here at Tacoma Public Schools and making sure that we are really taken care of. So, he's one of our hidden gems that's around and that, just very, very, very fortunate for him, you know, for us to have him. Only question I have, what do you think, you know, about the capital budget? Is that going to come back again next year?
The simple majority provision?
Yeah.
I think it will come back next year. We'll ask him to keep working on that. There was an amendment that the, one of the senators put out there that would have allowed for the capital budget to, or the school bond to pass at fifty-five percent rather than sixty percent. That amendment was tabled, which is a parliamentary procedure to make sure it doesn't actually get a vote. I think that that would have passed, to be honest with you, and I think that the capital budget writers might have been a little bit concerned if that did pass at fifty-five percent because it would have been a big draw on their capital budget. Right now, the capital budget, one-third of the capital budget, the bonded portion of capital budget, goes to school construction. We got one point one billion dollars in school construction out of the capital budget again this year. Those numbers are just going up. We're a growing state and we're having to build more schools across the state, particularly in the Puget Sound area where we're just growing like gangbusters up here. And I think that the legislature, that the capital budget folks might have been a little bit concerned that fifty-five percent would have meant that it was almost a two billion dollar draw on the capital budget. Who knows? I do think it's coming back, Madam President. I think that, I think that what it's going to be incumbent upon us as education specialists and school district advocates to do is to look for creative ways where we can generate some savings maybe in school construction that will allow for the legislature to be able to fund a little bit more. So, there's different things that can be done, and I'm glad that you asked that question. We had a, there's a big group of us now, school district lobbyists, who get together on a weekly basis, and we were meeting for the last, daily for the last couple of weeks of this legislative session. We got together afterward in mid-May, and we've already started discussing how we're going to go after the fifty-five percent, if not fifty percent, school construction. So, we'll keep moving forward on that.
Thank you very much. Okay, Scott, are you next?
Andrea.
Oh, Andrea, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I had a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
One, it's almost a question and a comment, but just when we talk about enrichment, you use the phrase programs, but it's right or correct to think about enrichment in terms of individual staff positions, too. It's everything that the legislature does not fund. So it's the more, like you did use the example, like more nurses and librarians. So connecting that to the points you were making about SEB, Rosalind, do you know how many additional staff we fund beyond those funded through the basic ed program?
I have it actually in my slide for my presentation at the board report tonight.
Okay.
If you don't mind waiting for that.
Then, just a quick question about ASB and the ASB bill. Is that a high school only requirement or is that secondary, is it seven through twelve, six through twelve, or is it nine through twelve? Do they get specific in the bill about grades that it applies to? Because even the idea of high school, like some schools are K-eight, some are, do they, do you remember if it was specific about where that applies?
Each school district with a high school must collect and publish on its website the following school-level data. So, it says only high school, so the districts, depending on what you define a high school to be, I think you're going to do it there. I am expecting that down the road, these types of programs will move into the middle school level as well, wherever we have extracurricular activities.
Then my last question was about K-three compliance. What is the class size that you need to hit in order to be compliant? And if we don't currently meet that mark, do you know how many additional classrooms we would need in order to get to the mark?
Yes, the ratio is seventeen to one. Of course, the ratio takes a formula. They don't, they're not required to be in dedicated classrooms, every single one of them. It just needs to be that those specific types of teachers are servicing students in K-three. Additionally, kids don't come in neat packages of seventeen to one. And so, the amount of, the number of teachers that we would need to hire in order to meet full compliance is forty-five. We're forty-five teachers short.
Do we have classrooms for that if we were to?
We'll have classrooms to fund some of them. Some of them will have to go into other places.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Debbie? Oh, I'm sorry, we have Enrique and then you. Go ahead.
Anytime.
Go ahead, we'll just come up the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Brent, for that presentation. So, your point, your question, but I'll get around school safety, there's a really big proportion of this, as you mentioned, of prevention, right? So, the counselors didn't get, we didn't get the extra funding for counselors. We know that we need to support our students with proper social-emotional learning. We've already embarked on that in this district. There's this base safety net we need to provide our students and our staff, our teachers, which would include the counselors, the nurses, the psychologists. We need to increase those numbers. So, part of this question would be where, how close was that vote? Would we like to bring it, can we bring it back next year? And I'll let you get to that. The other thing is that really these counselors do serve just a critical role. Teachers are doing much of that work, and the counselors are kind of doing a lot of the administrative clerical work and not the council work sometimes that they're trained to do. Maybe just a comment on that.
So, there wasn't necessarily a vote in terms of cutting the counselors out there. The way that it oftentimes works is the budget chair tells the sponsor of the bill, who generally is the one most closely associated and responsible for the bill, that they don't have enough money to fund the program as they want to do it. So, if you want the bill, you got to cut the cost of that bill. And so, in this case, I believe that the budget writers were telling Representative Lori Dolan, who was the lead legislator on this bill, that they didn't have the twelve million dollars that she wanted to fully fund this school safety bill the way that they did. She needed to get it down to about five million dollars in cost. So that is essentially where they had to make some decisions and the counselors fell out in there. I can't tell you exactly if the counselors, as a whole, are a seven million dollar cost statewide, but they are a significant cost. So what we'll do is when we go back to the legislature next year or future years, is to go into the, see if we can go into the basic ed funding provisions of the budget and move our counselor ratio up so that we can get at least one counselor in our middle schools, if that's possible, and two to three counselors in our high schools, if that's possible. The reason why you have the differing numbers is because certainly a middle school has fewer students, so you might be able to get away with fewer counselors on a per-student basis. So, we'll keep working on that. But that, it wasn't necessarily a vote as much as it was budget realities.
Okay. The, we can correlate this as you, so I appreciate you bringing up the ASB cards and that being correlated with higher graduation rates. That also comes into engagement, belonging, wellness of students. So, curious, do we, there's a question for maybe all those up here, do we provide those ASB cards for free for students that are free and reduced lunch at our district?
Director Garcia, you want to answer?
It typically goes on a sliding scale. No student is ever refused, but there will be cost. ASB budgets pay for a lot of the student activities. And so as students have access to those, there is an unintentional consequence of how well those activities be picked up, whether that be more fees students have to pay to participate, other local dollars, other local supports. And so, there will be further conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Debbie?
Yeah, I just want to talk also about the ASB, because I do agree that those students that are engaged are the ones that are most likely to graduate and have a positive experience. But I also know that it does pay for, like all the sports, pays for football and basketball. Those are two, actually, that make money to help pay for all the rest of the sports. So, when I look at, you know, last year, we had that bill passed that we had to provide lunch and breakfast, you know, for people who, even if they don't have the money, and that's been kind of a significant cost to us this year. So I would hope that next year, we would talk to the legislature about actually giving us money to pay for this, if this is what they desire, and talk about what the actual cost is and what the negative benefits could be to our district to absorb those costs.
Yes, and I'm glad that you brought that up, that the free and reduced lunch program from last year did weigh on the minds of some of these legislators when they were looking at this proposal as well. There was some funding for districts that have a high free and reduced lunch rate and were only about a thousand students or fewer, as I recall, was the number there. And we had the debate that the size of the district doesn't exactly matter. If they're going to require these additional costs to be put on the school districts, they ought to be assisting with the funding. So, I think that that's part of the reason why that bill, although it made it out of the House, didn't make it out of the Senate. And then the provisions, parts of it, ended up in the budget. And that bill started out originally as not just school athletics, but also all your other extracurricular activities, so your clubs, your chess club, your robotics club, your other clubs, were all thrown into that as well. So I think that, and I, you know, I was in debate club, I was one of those, you know, students. So, I would agree that, you know, you'd want to encourage more participation, but if the legislature is going to dictate that, then they, to the degree that they can be, they can assist in covering the costs when we've got other costs that call upon our enrichment funding, then they should do so. I agree with you, Director Wenskill, and we'll continue to have those conversations with the legislature.
Thank you. Director Hines?
Thank you. Piggybacking on that, do you think the legislature understands, when I hear them say ASB cards so that kids are in extracurricular activities, so that they are engaged, so that they do better and graduate? Is that basic education?
You know, I, this is always the most interesting part of the discussion that we have down there is what is basic education, right? And we know from the work that you all do here and the work that every other school district does, that basic education at the ground level is really different than basic education as is defined by the legislature and as was defined by, or found to be, you know, left wanting by the State Supreme Court in the McCleary decisions. So, the focus over the last number of years, I would argue, since the Supreme Court decision on McCleary, has been for the legislature to figure out what it's, what the legislative definition of basic education is and try and figure out a way to fund it. And quite honestly, you can't fault the legislature for the work that they've done on this issue over the years. State spending on K-12 education over the past forty years, since nineteen seventy-seven, started out at about two and a half billion dollars and is now up to over twenty-five, looks like twenty-six, maybe twenty-seven billion dollars, twenty-seven point one in this last budget. And this graph shows you a little bit of just how dramatic that increase has been since the McCleary decision came down. Legislature's been pouring more and more money into basic education, its definition of basic education. They're also asking that we try and do more to get more kids toward graduation. So, I like to, I always try and argue that whatever their bills are, their proposals are, are basic education and try and get them, put it into the basic education box. Many of the budget writers are beating me back, saying, no, we don't want it in the basic education box, because once it's in the box, they have to fund it. We're going to try and keep getting more into that box. Certainly counselors for the school safety issues, certainly more nurses. Fascinatingly, we had a nurse issue come up in the middle of the year where one of our local legislators brought that question up, and I said, yeah, we'd like to have a nurse in every school, but we can't afford to do it because you, as a legislator, only fund three nurses for all thirty thousand of our students. And we end up carrying the cost for additional nurses, and this is to your point, Director Cobb, that enrichment is individuals. And we're doing our best to get to where we can. We've got about one nurse for every two schools, and we'd like to get more. So, to the degree that we can get more of the bills and programmatic costs that the legislature would like to see more school districts do, included in basic education, we'll continue to try and do so. Because in the end, I think that the greatest infrastructure development we can do is to invest in our students, in our children, because they are the future of the state and they're the ones that really build the rest of the infrastructure for the continued success of the state of Washington. And this is where we start, and this is where we hope to continue to push.
Do you think that there's an opportunity for us to invite a group of legislators during the interim to Tacoma to have a conversation around what a twenty-first century basic education looks like? We've got all sorts of great examples of our innovative schools and our dynamic teachers and our incredible community, public-private partnerships, to help them think differently because it feels like we start with a number. They've got a budget number, like the old Karnak, I'm thinking of a number, and they back themselves into it. And perhaps outside of the tension of trying to fit into budgetary parameters, to have an exploratory conversation where we bring in not only district representatives, but families that are being impacted because of these different things that are provided as a part of basic education, as a starting point for a conversation, not an ask, not a demand, a conversation.
I think that we do have that opportunity, and quite frankly, Vice Chair, I think that Tacoma would be a great school district to open that conversation with legislators. I think we would want to partner up with a couple of other school districts that have been pretty innovative as well. But I think that you're on to something that we really should do, and I think legislators would be open to because there's a lot of interest in what education is out there. And I think there's, it's such a big area that it's hard to get your mind around it and your arms around it. And the more of those conversations that we And the more of those conversations that we can have, the better. And quite frankly, I think that, uh, the very first meeting we should have is to, uh, contact all of our, uh, Tacoma delegation members who, um, made a commitment to us last year to assist in dealing with some of the financial troubles that we had, and say thank you to them, because, uh, we really were successful this year with the levy bill with a number of other things that, uh, we were able to get through. And, um, the Tacoma area, uh, delegation, uh, in, um, in concert with some of the Seattle area delegation, really made sure that these, uh, major and, and important issues got through this year, and then we can start, uh, use that as a launching pad for what you were discussing. So, I would be very happy to work with you and the board and the, uh, management to, uh, to pursue, uh, something along those lines.
Okay, I think that'd be a great opportunity. Uh, my last question, just to clarify on the funding, and I do appreciate the work that our delegation led to get us back to being able to collect what local voters authorized us to collect.
Yes.
Is it, can we use that additional levy money, starting in 2020, for teacher salaries? Or are there parameters around how we can use that levy money?
Um, there, the, 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 the language in five-three-one-three says that you can't use it for anything other than enrichment. So, the additional funds, uh, are not intended, um, to be used for salaries for, um, basic education-funded, uh, staff. So, in fact, there's language in there that suggests that if that money is used for basic ed-funded staff salaries, uh, or other programs, basic ed programs, um, that the legislature funds, um, that the auditor or OSPI would, uh, point that out to the, uh, school district, and if it's not corrected within one year, then the school district would, they, they would actually be able to take that money away from the school district. Um, so, I would caution you strongly, uh, against using any of those funds for anything that even touches on basic education. It, it's intended for enrichment. Um, enrichment does fund salaries, that is a, a very true statement for those that are enrichment, um, uh, staff, but if it touches into basic education, you do run the risk of, uh, having those monies not only actually, and, and we're not exactly certain, but actually taken away, uh, from the school district. So, uh, I would just, this, this is going to be an area, this is kind of a new area of accountability that, uh, the, the legislature, um, uh, put into place this year, and, um, there were some parameters around it in, in the past, they added new language to it. So, um, I would be, um, I would, I would strongly caution against using it for anything other than enrichment.
And did they put in any new money for salaries? I know we've heard that the PEB, the benefits are going to transfer, we're going to have to cover that with our levy. Did they put in any additional funding that could be dedicated to teacher salaries?
Just the IPD, from what I could tell, the two percent, uh, implicit price deflator language. Um, I think that there was a, it, it's my opinion that the legislature was well aware of the bargaining that happened, uh, across the state of Washington, uh, this past year, and well aware of the increases that were put into place. And so, the IPD was intended just to be that supplemental piece, but nothing more that, uh, was discussed in any of the, uh, any of the public sessions, uh, hearings or anything like that. So, I don't believe that there was additional, there was additional money for, to cover the costs, the additional costs of the SEB, as you, as you rightly noted, and some additional costs for the parts of SEB that they were funding for the district. But there are, the, the SEB actually goes beyond what the state was covering for some of our local employees. So, we've got big costs coming our way for, uh, some of the part-time employees that were not otherwise, uh, funded by the legislature. So, um, um, and, and given the potential for those costs, particularly for, um, uh, you know, I, I, I'm not exactly certain how, uh, you're going to be able to cost the, uh, be able to fund the, um, uh, substitute teachers who are, uh, teaching both in Tacoma School District and the Clover Park School District adjacent to us, um, and who's going to cover which costs there, because there are costs that are going to be associated with covering substitute teachers. So, I would just caution all of you to be very, very, um, wary of, of overruns, because the legislature's funding what it's funding right now, and then maybe in the supplemental budget, they'll be able to provide more if you have overruns. But you still have to cover the costs today, and there's no guarantee that the legislature's going to cover those costs tomorrow. So, I, I, I would just highly recommend that you be cautious, particularly with this new, uh, program.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie, for coming and bringing us up to date on what's going on. Really appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome.
And again, I'm happy to meet individually or collectively with any of you at any time. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I, uh, we're not going to, uh, move to the seventh item of, uh, order yet. I'm going to ask for a, I'm going to move to suspend the rules, can I have a second?
Second.
Spend, move to the second, is suspend the rules so that we can, uh, present, uh, some, um, recognition and awards to two very special people who sit up here. Thank you. I'm going to give you this, because I'm going to go down.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. We have two young people who have spent, three of them actually, one is unable to be here tonight, who have spent two years with us, and they sit at the end of the day and they have been, uh, just outstanding young individuals and have helped us out in innumerable times when we're working on policy matters and telling us whether they, uh, you know, what they thought of them and, and offering advice and, um, and what we want to do tonight is to honor them and give them some tokens of our appreciation from the Tacoma School Board for your service. So, Annika and Will, will you come down here, please? Amanda's going to help me. All right, I have some really nice comments I would like to read about all three of the kids. Uh, Valeria Davila Hernandez was unable to be here tonight, but we have, we'll make sure that she gets her, her nice little guests. But let's start with Annika Josef. Annika is a senior at Henry Foss High School, and she came on the school board on September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. And this is what people have to say about Annika. Principal Lysandra Ness. Annika is a dedicated, focused, and determined young woman who is a full IB Diploma Program student. She has faced adversity in a couple of her classes and met it with grace and accomplishment. She single-handedly brought back our drama program to Foss. She is an amazingly talented student in the arts. She's been a driving force to developing a positive culture at Henry Foss High School. Okay. I'm going to read what, um, Principal Mc, uh, David McCogan said about Valeria Davila Hernandez. Sorry, she couldn't be here tonight. She is a senior at Mount Tahoma High School, began on the school board same time on September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. Principal McCogan, Valeria is a multi-year servant leader with ASB. Throughout her time as a T-Bird, Valeria demonstrated what it meant to be an outstanding student. She could often be found studying in the commons when she wasn't in her many AP or college prep courses while maintaining a high GPA. Outside of her school day, Valeria spends much of her time in the CSF program and working with the school board in addition. Valeria worked at her family restaurant and currently works at Starbucks. To say that her plate, her plate is full would be an understatement. Yet she still finds time to serve people. Plain and simple, Valeria is a good person who wants the best for her classmates, community, and was a fantastic choice for school board representative, and I think we can all agree with that. And Valeria, we're sorry you're not with us tonight, sweetie, so hopefully you'll be watching. Okay. William Will O'Halloran. Okay. Will is a senior at Stadium High School, and he began on the school board on the same date, September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. And here's what his teacher, Lisa Rinn, has to say about Will. I have nothing but wonderful things to say about Will O'Halloran. Not only is he a top academic student and athlete in cross-country and track, he is a kind, genuine person. I have had him as a math student and an ASB student. He is our current ASB Vice President and does a phenomenal job of leading our student body by example. He is flexible, hardworking, and respectful at all times. His positive attitude is contagious. I am thrilled, uh, that he will be formally recognized as student representative. He deserves great things. Will, thank you for your service for us. And we are really going to miss these two young people. I think of all the representatives that we have had since I have been on the board, I can honestly say I think they have been our best in terms of the contributions that they've made and their commitment to being here and, um, you know, taking, taking the time out of their studies, and they both, you know, obviously you can tell the two that are here, and Valeria, they are outstanding people, and we expect great things from them in the future. Okay. Where are you going?
UCLA.
Oh, okay, you both will be Cali kids, then. All right, great, congratulations.
Amanda President?
Yes.
Uh, just a couple of comments.
Sure.
I would concur that, um, all three of our student representatives, the past couple of years, have been very involved and, um, have been willing to come up and share perspective, challenge us, push us, which is exactly, uh, the intent of that role. So, thank you for taking it seriously. Um, Annika, I look forward to handing you your diploma in a couple of weeks, uh, at Foss this year. And, uh, I was joking with Will, Will's the, uh, friends with the son of a guy I played basketball with, and a couple of years ago, this young cross-country guy kept showing up on our Tuesday night games, running circles around me. And literally this afternoon, I saw him out, I think with your track or cross-country teammates, running around the north end. So, um, thank you both for your service, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Will, were you not on the, uh, didn't the stadium track team win academic awards this year?
Uh, yeah, the stadium-
The cross-country, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the stadium boys' cross-country team took first place in the state for having the highest team GPA.
Great.
That's awesome.
Yeah. All right. And, and again, we're going to miss, miss you both, but I know you're off to exciting times. Okay. Members of the public wishing to address the board. The school board, school board members encourage public participation, your respectful and civil input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, please follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Card submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The stu, the superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone you have, you're going to have up tonight to three minutes to share your comments, because we have such a large number of people wishing to, to comment.
Two.
Two minutes, I'm sorry, two minutes. Sorry. Misread it, I was reading that. So, you will have, um, president may, uh, cut the time, and I'm going, that's what we're going to do, and we do that when we have a large number of people. So, you will have two minutes. You have a, uh, monitor over there that will start with the two minutes. When you reach one minute, it will ding, letting you know that you have one minute to complete your remarks. We would appreciate it if you would, um, complete your remarks within the two-minute period. Thank you. All right, Superintendent Santorino, do you want to start that?
First speaker is Jeanette Erickson, followed by Michelle Hahn.
I'm Jeanette Erickson, and I'm the instructional coach at Jenny Reed Elementary School, and I have been very involved in the Tacoma Public Schools as a parent and as an educator and a taxpayer, and I was going to go for six minutes, but I didn't think you'd go for it, so I'll stick to my two.
No, not tonight.
So, I am here to speak on behalf of the iReady Classroom Adoption, specifically to the benefits that the curriculum have for students and teachers. I'll start with teachers. Teachers know that the curriculum is structured to support in helping students make sense of the math, foster thoughtful and deep conversations around new concepts, and apply those ideas to challenging and rigorous tasks. One of my first-grade teachers was a participant in the pilot, and when I asked her about the strengths of the curriculum, she got a big smile in fa, on her face, and she was very excited to say that there were many opportunities for students to engage in academic discourse. She noted that student talk was woven seamlessly into daily lessons in authentic and meaningful ways. She said it made it so easy to do. She added about there were multiple opportunities to use manipulatives in introducing mathematical concepts. In fact, she pulled out a student textbook, she wove through it, and she showed all the opportunities students had to be able to use manipulatives, which is super powerful in understanding math. Another bonus to teachers, the resources and structures are so complete and explicit that new teachers and teachers who may not be as confident in teaching math are able to use that as a fine resource. Benefits to students, probably the biggest benefit to students is that they have teachers who have ready resources at their fingertips. They have the opportunity to participate in thinking and working like mathematicians. Certainly, teachers must be able to know their students as mathematicians and understand instructional practice, but the resources are for them to provide first-rate instruction for students. I am proud, as an instructional coach, parent, and Tacoma taxpayer, to wholeheartedly endorse the adoption of the K-five Ready Classroom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Hahn, followed by Gwen Newport.
Good evening, board members. Um, I am here to advocate for opening up more access to our elementary students, um, for social-emotional learning. I gave my students the writing prompt "Social-Emotional Learning Is," and I informed them that I was going to be speaking to you, and I wanted to know what they thought about it before I prepared what I was going to say. First, they were shocked that not all students had Cell lessons every day in their classrooms, and then they made sure that I was going to share their work when I spoke with you. Here's what several of my third graders had to say. I think Cell helps my class understand that other people have ideas too, not just them. Other teachers should teach this. Not only does it help teachers get to know their class of students, it helps to know how people feel. Cell is good for you because you can learn more emotions and tell if people are sad or mad by their body language and their face. It can also make you more caring when you understand someone's feelings. Another thing is that when you're super mad or even out of control, you can use a strategy. I'd recommend using breathing techniques like the lazy eight, six-sided breathing, et cetera. Cell is very helpful for the body, mind, and mostly your emotions. I think Cell is that we learn to share and feel empathy. I think Cell helps us to be better at helping each other when we need it. Cell can help because there are so many strategies to help you calm down. Cell is like a community of people, helping up each other out, and it makes me better, makes me a better friend to other students. Other teachers should be doing this for kids. I think Cell is where you can be a great community and learn best from friends and teachers. You can learn lots of- You can learn lots of empathy and see how others, and you can learn lots of empathy and how to see others and how they are feeling. You can make them feel important, so they can feel wanted. It can make you a better person than you are. You can teach other people how to change the world and make it better. You can start to express feelings to others. It helps everyone to step out of their comfort zone and express everything they have inside that they are keeping out of the outside. They are mostly taking the chance of letting everyone who they, know who they really are. Everyone starts to know more about one another and to understand the whole entire community."
Can you summarize your remarks? Your time is up. Thank you.
As you can see, my students have multiple perspectives of what social-emotional learning is, but one thing they agree on is that CELLE is the strongest foundation to build a community upon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Gwen Newport, followed by Kathy Hall.
I'm Sammy.
I'm Gwen.
And I'm Annie.
We're eighth graders at Jason Lee Middle School, and today we're here to present our proposal to install to a 300-kilowatt solar array on the roof at Jason Lee Middle School and to ask for your support for the project.
Let's start with what we want to achieve. We want Jason Lee to cut down on CO2 emissions and reduce their electrical costs by installing a 300-kilowatt solar array on our roof.
Jason Lee is an example of an ideal location to place solar panels. Our roofs are completely unobstructed and would be perfect for 300 panels, which could produce 90,000 kilowatts of electricity. This installation would prevent over 100,000 pounds of CO2 emissions.
Cost-wise, the panels are about $700 each, including installation fees. So, if we bought and installed 300 solar panels, it would cost about $210,000. If we were to proceed with our solar power plan, we could save $6,500 from the $69,000 Jason Lee spends on electricity each year.
Jason Lee would be fundraising for all of the costs this proposal requires. Thankfully, we have verbal confirmation from both Tacoma Power and the Bonville Educational Foundation to support and help pay for our solar power plan. Tacoma Power and the BEF combined are willing to contribute at least $100,000 to our proposal.
Not only would we use grant money, we would ask other members of our community for support, host fundraisers, and have supporters sponsor a panel.
All we need from our school board is support for the project and approval to apply for grants and approval to fundraise to pay for and install our solar panels.
The whole process of applying for grants, getting permits, installation, inspections, et cetera, could take up to a year or more. We would like you to know that even if this project takes a year, we are still extremely committed to making this a reality.
Our solar power plan becoming successful requires support from the entire school community. It is very important that our school board members are open to change and opportunity. We need to remember that this solar technology is easily available to use on our schools. It's ready when we are, and we're ready for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Was Kathy Hall, were you one of the three? Or do we have Kathy? Oh, okay. All right. Kathy Hall, followed by Abigail Hartman.
Good evening, honorable school board members and executives. My name's Kathy Hall, and I'm a science teacher at Jason Lee Middle School. And I came tonight to support my amazing, sorry, amazing students. They did a phenomenal presentation at the Governor's STEM Alliance Meeting, and so...
It's okay.
It's why we do what we do, right?
Okay.
At any rate, I found that, thinking about their presentation tonight, I thought, well, there's some other things maybe I could address. So, I would like to address the serious situation I feel is in our school system. As everyone is well aware, we're facing major budget struggles, and it reminded me of a conversation a group of us had with an executive of a local power company years ago about how power companies would be able to meet the needs of the future as populations keep growing in our area. His answer was amazingly simple: conservation. He said, "It was estimated that power companies could increase their capacity to serve new homes and businesses by as much as 40% through getting their consumers to conserve energy and stop wasting energy needlessly. This is not to say that we all need to sit in the dark and freeze, but we do need to stop wasting energy when spaces and equipment are not in use. I know that the power bills for all of TPS buildings must add up to a staggering monthly price tag. If this district were to start by working to reduce electrical costs through conservation and equipment changes, such as LED bulbs, automatic shut-offs, power strips to shut off equipment at night, and we all, as a district, committed to some simple changes that are easily met, I think we could make a huge difference."
Kathy, can you summarize, please, hon?
Thank you.
That was it. Well, thank you.
Sorry, the crying took some time.
No problem. Don't ever worry about that.
Abigail Hartman, followed by Crystal Hartman.
Hello, school board. My name is Abigail Hartman, and I'm a seventh-grade student at Stewart Middle School. Today, I wanna talk about the unfairness of the qualifications for the finals of the track meets. Only the top 24 in each event are allowed to participate, which this happened yesterday. I run in the 100-meter all season, and although I know that I was not fast enough to compete in the finals, I have a couple of friends who I thought would make it. One of my friends, who runs the two-mile, missed qualifying for finals by eight seconds. All of my coaches implied that it is possible that he could have qualified if he had run on a better track. The only decent track, the only decent and full-size track my team and I ran on was our first meet when we ran against First Creek. My coaches said that most of our runners had their best times at that meet. I know I did. In fact, I was over one second faster of any of my times at Giadroni Middle School, where we ran three times on their so-called track. It is dirt with dust lines for lanes, and considering all the practices and efforts my team and I put in, we should've had more runners qualify for finals. And how we come, and how we ran against Baker and Giadroni three times, but never once went against Gray, Meeker, or Mason. I would've liked to run on the different tracks around the district. I feel like that would've made it more fair for my team when it comes to qualifying for finals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Crystal Hartman, followed by Katrina Tuggel.
Hi. So, we were intending that I would speak first, because I have more of the details. So, I am speaking both as my parent of my middle schooler, as well as a teacher at another middle school. And I am talking about some system-wide inequality that I noticed, as a parent actually, through our track and field teams this year. So, first of all, most of you are aware, we have nine middle schools. There were five track meets that, five weeks of tracks, and four schools each week would host a meet. Most of the time, each meet would only have two teams competing, but one location every week would have three teams competing. Stewart did that four times. So, of their five meets, they were at that, three teams, four times. Most other schools were less than two. So, there's kind of an inequality there. Three of those times were at Giadroni, and as my daughter said, like, it is a dirt track. It's gravel. That definitely affects the times. It's very windy there on the track. If you've ever been there on a windy day, it's really bad and kicks up a lot of dust. So, it definitely affects the times. And so, then when it comes to the championships, when you only have 25, 24 qualifiers in each one, especially when we're talking about milliseconds in that 100-meter, or even in, like she said, the two-mile, like, we're talking close times, and yet they're judged on running on a non-normal track. Like, they're being compared against all these other schools who got to run on good tracks. So, my ask for you is, besides possibly updating the track at Giadroni to get it up to, you know, a good track, also asking the athletic department to make sure that they're considering facilities, track conditions, fairness between the scheduling of our teams, so that hopefully we can all feel better about the fact that our students are getting equality among, throughout the district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Katrina Tuggel, followed by Sheri L. Stevens.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Katrina Tuggel, and I'm the assistant principal at Lister Elementary. Woo-boo, Michelle Hahn. Thank you for coming up earlier this evening to share our students' experience with CELLE. As assistant principal at Lister and our staff, along with Kristy King, social-emotional learning has been at the cornerstone of systematic change in our building. This has taken place through one piece, zones of regulation. Our staff members wear these. And all staff and students having the common language to be able to express their emotions and their feelings, having strategies to de-escalate themselves in the classroom or quickly in the hallway. These two pieces, in general, have supported students to empower themselves. So, instead of being out of the classroom, we're able to support them inside the classroom, and part of that being supporting kids to help their academics. We've also been able to utilize this into the ELO space, so our community partners have been able to use the same language, use some of the same social-emotional learning curriculum to support our students outside of the school day. As we all know, data tells a story. The year prior to implementation of CELLE, five days a week, 30 minutes a day, in all classrooms at Lister, we had 118 suspensions and 19 expulsions, so prior to the implementation. The first year of implementation, we drove our exclusionary data down to 43 suspensions and five expulsions. At this point in the school year, year two, again, five years, or five days, 30 minutes a day of explicit instruction, we have 21 suspensions and three expulsions. Social-emotional learning changes lives, and teachers at Lister go hard every single day to make this, and they know that relationships matter. Through CELLE, we've been able to teach our students to meet anger with sympathy, contempt with compassion, cruelty with kindness, angry grimaces with smiles, and forgive, forgive and forget about finding fault. Love has been the weapon, and relationships have been the weapon, and we are seeing academic gains at Lister as a result. Please consider CELLE adoption. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your work.
Sheri Stevens, followed by Amanda Shagrin. Shagrin.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Stevens, and I'm the proud family support liaison at Fossa Elementary, and I would like to take a few minutes of your time to communicate the importance of prioritizing social-emotional learning and advocating for a set curriculum to incorporate the progression of social emotion competencies within all students. As a voice for my colleagues, I would like to share our thoughts about the importance of a social-emotional curriculum. Our interventionist team would like me to share, as interventionists, sorry, our training in SEL has helped us become consistent with all our staff using common language and strategies with students in all situations within our school. Having the zones of regulations in place throughout the school has given us the tools to monitor students' emotions and give them the necessary acknowledgement and encouragement to ensure they are safe and valued and prepared to be learners. An intermediate teacher would like me to share the following. Using the social emotion curriculum with my fifth graders this year has greatly impacted their ability to respond positively to social issues and provided them with the problem-solving skills they need to maintain healthy peer relationships. After teaching the SEL lessons to students, they're actively using the skills and strategies they have learned to support their own social-emotional well-being. A primary teacher shared, "We have seen an improvement in our second graders to stop, question, and listen to others in our daily school life and when they see or hear or feel a problem happening. They call this being an empathy detective. They are amazing at it. We feel that this is because the SEL lessons are taught through piloting curriculums this year and the daily morning meetings that we, our students, are using, and they cope with things that may arise throughout the day. School-wide, this has been an enriching program for students and staff. I can wholeheartedly say, as a voice for all staff at Fossa, we continue to see great growth amongst our students' social-emotional skills. With the district-wide social-emotional curriculum, our students will be able to access the lessons and curriculum within each classroom throughout the district. Thank you for your time and support."
Thank you.
Amanda Shagrin, is it Shagrin?
Shagrin.
Shagrin, sorry. Amanda Shagrin, followed by Liz Guerrero.
Hi. I'm Amanda Shagrin. I am the TA rep at Whittier and the soon-to-be Fossa Zone rep for the TA. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As you may know, in an effort to rebuild relationships between teachers in the district, the union and the district have been collaborating together in listening sessions. Ours at Whittier today was to be the fourth and final session of the year. My staff and I rearranged doctor's appointments, childcare, and many, many other things to be at that meeting today. We are very disappointed and frustrated with the district that with less than an hour's notice, it was canceled. If you could be at our school, the atmosphere amongst the Whittier staff this afternoon was deflation and frustration. I was asked to come and speak tonight. One of the districts, as far as I understand, points of contention is that me and my staff decided to create an agenda. We began by creating this agenda as soon as we discovered we were chosen to be a site for these listening sessions back in February. We wrote countless emails solidifying the issues that we wanted to address. We had three meetings after school as an entire staff, looking over the agenda and deciding who was to speak about what issue. Our goal was to speak for district-wide concerns, and we took speaking for our fellow teachers very seriously. We created the agenda because, as a staff, we decided we what, we did not want it to be an emotional venting session, but a targeted, well-thought-out opportunity to speak about issues that we find important. We wanted you to hear our thoughts on behavior, curriculum needs, communication concerns between teachers and district, and our thoughts on how to keep, how to improve the safety for students and teachers in our buildings. We had 11 different teachers who had volunteered to speak at this meeting, and the rest of the staff had agreed to attend. We are asking you to please treat us with the respect that we treat you and keep meetings when we have agreed upon them. We really sincerely hope that we still get this opportunity for you to hear our thoughts on these issues. Thank you.
Liz Guerrero, followed by Liesel Stankel.
This week, I learned some interesting things about my students. One of my fifth-graders' cats had kittens. One of my fourth graders is sad to be moving to Las Vegas, and one of my third graders is worried, because his dad has gone to jail. My students shared this news at our daily closing meeting. They feel safe to share both good news and bad, because we have created a caring community together as a direct result of our participation in piloting social-emotional learning curriculum through our participation in the Wallace Grant. My name is Liz Guerrero, and I teach GATE at Edison Elementary. The different CELLE programs we have used this year have covered mindfulness, conflict resolution, positive self-talk, handling peer pressure and bullying, and many other skills my students need to navigate their lives. Because of their increasing skills, I have watched my students use mindfulness to make better observations in science and deepen their reading comprehension. They are more respectful with each other in discussions and on the playground. They are more willing to take risks in math and bounce back more quickly when they make mistakes. Because participation in CELLE has been school-wide, there is common language and practice throughout the building. A student can leave my class and expect success in music, PE, library, even the after-school extended learning opportunity, with the same vocabulary for conflict resolution and self-regulation. My students know they are at their best when they are calm and using their whole brain. Watching them during the current testing season independently use square breathing, sequential muscle release, and other focusing skills and stress-reducing techniques has been amazing. Having them remind me to do the same has been humbling. They know they are responsible and able to control their own behavior. In the past, we've been encouraged as educators to build relationships with our students and to promote a growth mindset. Having this formalized with a dedicated curriculum, I have been so much more successful with this. There is so much content to teach, and there always seems to be something new, but now in this age of technology and social isolation, it seems the time has come where the need to teach students simply to get along with one another is a priority. It lays the foundation for all the academic skills to come in a significantly more successful and pleasant manner. I encourage adoption of CELLE. Like you said, it's a safety issue.
Thank you.
Liesel, followed by Christina Loper.
Hi, members of the board, Chair Bial, student representatives, Superintendent Santorno and Deputy Superintendent. My name is Liesel Stankel, and I speak to you as a parent with a student in the district's schools and as a community member. I was also a part of the Budget Advisory Committee as well. I appreciate that you have had extremely difficult decisions to balance the budget for this coming school year and that these extremely tough decisions and cuts have had to be made. I can't imagine how difficult that must be. As you know, it impacts our students, our staff at our schools, and those who support our schools in management. our schools in many ways. As a member of the public, I humbly request full disclosure to us about what exactly have been the decisions you've made and how you see that's impacting our students, community, and quality of education that TPS provides. This transparency is ultimately important so that community can weigh in on some of the tough decisions made and that if there will be any recommended changes, we have time to do so in a thoughtful and strategic manner. You are responsible to relay this information in a clear and understandable manner to the general public. Even though the details have not been made public, I must speak up about a couple of positions I know have been riffed: college and career counselors at several high schools. These positions hugely impact our students in the following ways. They set the culture of high expectations and goal-setting for our high school students. They are part of setting a culture of inclusivity and of hope for all our students. They help students understand and work through their high school and beyond plans. They are often the first line for students when they might not have immediate access to a guidance counselor. They triage the most pressing needs for the guidance counselors. This position is a part of the very fabric of the schools they are in. They help to coordinate the college access partners and admission presentations, representatives. They help with field trips to campus and career exploration and manage important contracts like Accuplacer with TCC so that students can have better access. They are so vitally important. Please consider them as you are finalizing budget and have some kind of a mechanism so that public can give input. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Loper, followed by Holly Stewart.
I have three minutes, like, all timed, really good, so I'm gonna do my best here. My name is Christina Loper, and I'm a parent of both Geiger and Bryant students. I applaud you for looking for a viable solution to this Montessori middle school kerfuffle. Most of us are not surprised at the continued growth of the Montessori K-12 Innovative Zone Program here in Tacoma, and as Geiger parents, we recognize things have changed, but please do not tell us that K-8 was never an option and don't put us on the back burner. I encourage the board to move with speed, transparency, integrity, accountability, and most importantly, with opportunities for open-form parent involvement at both Montessori schools to find a solution. With wait lists at two overflowing schools, clearly there is a strong desire for this type of education. My daughter, my oldest daughter, was part of the inaugural class at Geiger. I was at the community meetings when the board asked for our trust and support to build the larger 550-student Geiger building with a middle school wing, and then when it promised that by the time my kinder rolled to sixth grade, we would know if we were going to have two parallel K-8 programs or one joint middle school program elsewhere. The board needed time to figure out how, the board figured out how, and we all thought five years was plenty of time to figure this out. The intent was publicly noted on the website and elsewhere. That same student is now in her final year at Bryant, where the school is bursting at the seams in nine portables. Those nine portables are taking up valuable playfield time, space, and on 80-degree days like today, they don't have air conditioning. I have to say, I'm disappointed by this fact. Not that she's graduating in the Montessori Middle School, but in the fact that there's still no clear plan for sustaining this innovative and desirable program eight and a half years later. So perhaps you can see why I'm perplexed that my daughter is finishing at eighth grade in an overcrowded Bryant, and I'm disappointed the letter that states that Geiger wasn't built as a K-8. Again, I encourage speed. I encourage transparency. I encourage integrity because, well, y'all made some, y'all have already missed a bunch of timeframes for agreements that you made with the community, and you're not exactly sticking to the spirit of the collaboration you sought from us for the past decade. I encourage accountability, well, because you're elected. So here I am again pledging to volunteer as a community partner to the district, strategic plan goal number two, and to help to continue foster safe, to help continue to foster safe, equitable, and quality education for our students, strategic goal number one.
Your time is up. If you could some...
Through Montessori education. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Stewart, followed by Tina Taylor.
Again and again, I hear that Tacoma Public Schools are in a budget crisis, that extreme measures are required because of the shortfalls in your expected revenue. While it's clear that the state legislature has limited Tacoma's ability to collect levy funds and added new mandates, it is also clear that the district administration is not fully operating in a budget crisis mode. When compared to other similar school districts in Washington State, Tacoma continues to spend the lowest percentage of its budget on teaching activities, but the highest percentage on central administration. Spending for the Tacoma School District's business office, human resources, and public relations staff are much higher than similar districts. This is not the way to lead by example in a budget crisis. Administrative salaries in Tacoma are high across the board. At the leadership level, executive pay in Tacoma is well above market rate. It is time to lead by example and right-size Tacoma schools' administrative spending. For the past few school board meetings, I have seen you consider and approve funding for expensive new curriculum materials at all grade levels in ELA and math. While I agree that these curriculum resources are useful, if you are truly in a budget crisis, then you should be seriously considering whether now is the right time to splurge on costly options when high-quality, free, open-source materials are readily available. The school board also continues to plan for renovating and reopening Hunt Middle School. Renovation costs are part of the capital budget. Opening an additional middle school means added operating costs that will directly affect your future budget capacity. You should prioritize renovating your existing schools, especially elementary classrooms in Bryant, Downing, Whitman, and Lowell, before adding another campus to your bottom line. This is especially critical with the K-3 class size requirements. These ideas may not fully fill your budget deficit, but they are worth your serious consideration to show that everyone is in this together. On a separate note, I want to invite the school board members to attend an important community conversation at Bryant Montessori on Wednesday, May 29 at 5:15 p.m. Parents, teachers, and staff will be talking about tools to improve equity in our classrooms and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Taylor, followed by Wendy Holcomb.
Hi, I'm Tina Taylor, and I'm here tonight as a community member, and I want to talk numbers. I've heard a lot of numbers tonight. I want to talk about one person who works every year with 300-plus seniors at Mount Tacoma High School, usually the low-income students. Many are immigrants. Many are the children of immigrants. She takes hundreds of students on field trips to four-year community college, trade programs, and technical schools. Her school has earned the top WSOS scholarships by any high school in the state, three years running. She has gotten triple the WSOS scholarships for her students by working together of any comprehensive high school or any high school here in Tacoma. The WSOS scholarship, in case you don't know, fills the gap between other scholarships and the total need for students' tuition, and it is a lifesaver for families with no money for college. She earned last year, with the help of working with her students, $2 million of scholarship money for those students. They couldn't have done it without her help. They don't understand the processes that they need to go through. Their families can't help them. She is the person that can and will help them. Some more numbers. Three 15-minute miles consecutively, carrying a 40-pound load. She did this as part of the firefighter test to encourage three of her students who want to become firefighters on a hot summer day in August for free. She cost, oh, this is one dedicated person who served with loyalty, integrity, and heartfelt care of her students. She was fired. Fired. I'm calling it that. Riffs are firing. She cost the district about $50,000 in benefits. Her name is Angela Phillips.
Wendy Holcomb, followed by Shazza Carter.
Thank you, school board members and students. My name is Wendy Holcomb. I'm a parent of three TPS grads, and I'm a community member, and I also would like to acknowledge your leadership and your hard work during these really difficult times of budget cuts and very hard decisions. I would also, as a community member, like more information as soon as possible so that we can better help students as we're having these cuts in staffing, like you've heard. And I'd like to acknowledge the incredible work of all our TPS staff. I know that, you know, there's cuts that have to be made, but I also really wanted to uplift the work of our college and career guidance specialists in supporting student success in accessing and rolling in and completing a post-secondary degree or certificate. As you've heard, several of these positions have been cut, and these are key and critical people in providing, finding funding for college, completing FAFSA and WASPA, completing scholarships like you heard with the WSOS or the Ready to Rise or ACT VI scholarships, college applications, creating college and post-secondary culture in their school with things like signing days, taking students on field trips to campuses, to businesses, but most importantly, building relationships, trusted relationships that take a lot of time and really, they instill that hope and confidence so that students can really fulfill their future. I think that we really need to find a way that we can not lose these positions or at least to let us know as a community as soon as possible how we can better support our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. I'm worried I pronounced this incorrectly. Shiaja Carter? S-H-I-A, S-I-A, Carter. Angel Morton, followed by Mike Halliday.
Good evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of the professional technicals, office professionals, and the certified staff in Tacoma. This year, TA and the district have been trying to work together on rebuilding a positive relationship, but sadly, all that work is starting to fall apart. Amanda spoke to it earlier, but other people have also mentioned it. TPS has chosen to riff people who have invested their careers here. People with only one year until retirement have been riffed. People who have worked at their jobs and become experts in their field and have been promoted to leadership positions are being told Tacoma doesn't need those leader positions anymore. Many of the people that you're laying off have worked in Tacoma 10, 20, 30 more years. That is not okay. I ask you, how are we going to attract world-class people to our district when they have no guarantee of a position after 20 years in the district? More damage was done beyond the riffs with the displacements that you rolled out. You have significantly impacted wraparound services. Family liaisons are suffering. People who work with homeless students are being reduced. Our nurses are being cut. These displacements are hurting our most vulnerable students. Some people who have dedicated their careers to developing these programs are being told, "We don't need your expertise there anymore," and others are seeing their workload doubled because they're going to be split between multiple locations, but the kids are going to continue to have the same need. Tacoma prides itself on an ever-increasing graduation rate, but the supports required to get to this school are being eroded. I'm asking you to take a look at your consent agenda tonight. With a single vote, you are laying off so many people, changing so many people's lives, and I ask you to reconsider this, please.
Mike Halliday, followed by Melanie Moody.
Board members and superintendent, I'm Mike Halliday. I'm a parent in the Tacoma School District. I have two children, one who goes to Grant Center for the expressive arts. I'm here to speak about the ready classroom curriculum for K-5 math. I just wanted to speak in support of it. I think it helps staff because it provides them with tips and tools for how they can teach children so they can be prepared for the future. I also believe that being able to show learning standards post and pre the grade that they're currently working in is helpful, especially for students who are struggling or students who are excelling. I think that's a great way for them to be able to see what they can do to help them. As a parent, I like that there are activities and tasks that the kids can bring home and use, that there's a digital option for them, that it's safe for them to use, and I like that there's activities that are both in English and in Spanish. I would encourage you to work on getting that broadened to some of your other top languages in the school district so that other families can participate. I think the last thing I would say is, don't wait five, 10 years to update the curriculum. Everything needs maintenance, buildings, transportation, technology, curriculum is included in that. Please make sure that it's included as a regular part of your maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Moody.
My name is Melanie Moody, and I'm here representing parents at Bryant Montessori School as well as Geiger. For years, the district has taken credit for its innovative schools. Bryant Montessori is one of those schools. We are one of the state's only pre-K through 8 free public Montessori schools. Can you imagine all the students we have there? Yet, as enrollment has grown, the district has failed to provide critical facilities, resources, and staff to run this program as it's intended. Students at Bryant receive less than students at other Tacoma elementary schools because preschoolers and middle schoolers are not factored into your staffing formulas. As a result, the students at Bryant receive less library time, less music instruction, less physical education, less counselor support, and office support. It's a shared resource from pre-K through 8. I have to reemphasize that. The paid preschool tuition is also mixed in to the general district budget. Students at Bryant also receive less equitable learning experience due to the failing facility. It is a failing facility. I invite you all to come down if you haven't already this month or this semester. The building does not have space where all the students can gather together for schoolwide assemblies, performances, or parent events. It's not up to fire code. It does not have a sprinkler system. It is not safe. It does not have adequate HVAC. It does not have windows that fully open. Children have to wear or shed coats during classroom instruction. The temperatures can range up to 80 degrees in the nine portables that are now supporting a dual Montessori middle school. Special education students are not allowed access to ADA. We are not ADA compliant. So I urge you, the Bryant facility is well above capacity with waiting lists. Parents and students want these programs to grow. I'm sorry to be over time. I would just hope that you could take the simple math equation of two elementary schools funneling into one middle school, and it's time for you to prioritize Bryant at the top of our capital funding list. I'm here to urge support for capital funding for a bond to rebuild this school. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all that you came tonight. Appreciate it. Moving on, that concludes our public comment period. Item number eight is the consent agenda. Have a motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to adopt a consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Director Heinz?
President, I have a question. For item 8.3A, the submission of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, I'm curious, and I read through, I think it was 153 pages, could you help me better understand the level of scrutiny that the Washington State Auditor's Office provides, what the parameters were around the budget, and if there are any findings or opportunities?
I'm going to comment on that at the end of the meeting, answer that question in detail, because we got our audit findings yesterday, and I was there and was asked to do that, so...
On the CalFORD?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's good, by the way, so... Am I correct, Rosalyn, what we...
Yes, I was just going to say that we received an unmodified opinion on our...
I was going to, I want to comment on that, so, at the end, because it addresses some issues that have come up here for a whole year that have been rather distressing to all of us, and the state auditor is the final word on what we're doing, so if you can wait till my board report...
Yeah, and I think my question, more specifically, because we're going to take action on this before we get to that point, is what they looked at, what the state auditor's office looked at, what the components were, because there were some inquiries from the community asking about expense and revenue and supplemental.
So if I could just take one minute to answer that. You know, our financial statements are prepared with generally accepted accounting principles, which is a highest standard of governmental accounting that you can provide. The state auditor's office looks at all of our financials. We prepare monthly financials as well as yearly financial statements. It incorporates all of our current funds, that being the capital, the ASB, the general fund. They review all of our notes to the financial statements in detail, ask lots of questions, ask for supporting documentation around each of those, do sample testing around general audit, internal audit-type activities, and then provide us with a report back on that. We received an unmodified report that included no findings associated with it. We received an unmodified report that included no findings associated with it.
And that was for the 2017, 2018, post-McClary money period.
And I would add to that, we're one of six districts in the state that actually follows the governmental accounting, the generally accepted accounting principles. Most districts operate on a cash basis, which has a lower standard of-
Yeah, it's a higher standard, right?
Correct. We are operating under a higher standard.
Okay, thank you.
They look at everything. I know, I used to work there. Look at everything. All right, is there any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, agenda is adopted. Okay, moving on. Policy matters, we have none. Item 10, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found in the district's website at tacomaschools.org/aboutfinance. Item 11, curriculum instruction. Item 11-1, approval of K-5 mathematics curriculum adoption and purchase. Dr. Garcia.
The deputy superintendent, on behalf of the assistant superintendent of teaching and learning, recommends the board of directors approve the adoption and purchase of Ready Classroom by curriculum associates for K-5 mathematics in the amount not to exceed $300, or excuse me, $3,500,000, including sales tax, funding source, curriculum instruction, basic education funds.
Move approval.
Please.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 11-1. Do we have any questions on this item? Okay, I think we, Director Wenske?
I just want to say that I appreciated going over the curriculum today, and as the parents said, it does have enrichment for those students who need that and remediation for those who need remediation, and frequently ways to make sure that the students understand the concepts, if they don't understand them, for the teachers to catch on to it. So the only thing is, it's good in Spanish, but I think we need to really talk to our ELL people, if other students come in who speak a different language, and maybe go with a different, like Engage New York for those students.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I just want to compliment, again, the staff under Marie Verhar's direction about the thoroughness that they have gone through on these curriculum adoptions, and I think, and the fact that we've had so many teachers come and tell us, you know, this is what we want, and this is, and that, in my history around here, which goes back even out in the classrooms, the last time they did a curriculum adoption, teachers were really not consulted. And so I think, I feel really confident as we move forward on these adoptions, and like, I believe it was Mr. Halliday, we will do them more often than 10 years. That's, you know, what happens. But anyway, are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is adopted 5-0. We now have a new mass curriculum. Okay, item 11-2, approval of grant proposal to the Department of Education Full Service Community Schools Program. Dr. Garcia.
The deputy superintendent, on behalf of the director of Whole Child, recommends the board of directors approve the request for Department of Education Full Service Community Schools Program in the amount of $2,304,476 for a period of September 30, 2019 through August 31, 2024, and approve expenditures of funds according to accepted guidelines. Funding source, Department of Education, Office of Innovation and Improvement. I'd like to just put a note, we have not been granted these funds. This is if we are approved.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Ben moved and seconded to approve supplemental of grant proposal to the Department of Education. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is adopted 5-0. Item 11-3, approval of grant proposal to the Wallace Foundation Partnerships for Social and Emotional Learning Initiative. Dr. Garcia.
The deputy superintendent, on behalf of the director of Whole Child, recommends the board of directors approve this request to the Wallace Foundation for funding not to exceed $2,600,000 for a period of September 1, 2019 through August 31, 2020, and approve expenditures of funds according to accepted guidelines. Funding source, the Wallace Foundation.
Move approval.
Second.
Ben moved and seconded. Are there any questions of Dr. Garcia? Director Heinz?
Thank you. So I appreciate the comments that we've heard this evening around an SEL curriculum and starting to standardize the training and the delivery. Can you explain how, if and how the Wallace Grant will support that, and, well, let's start there.
Yes, the grant, one of the requirements of the grant is that the district does adopt a SEL curriculum in the six pilot sites with the change theory that we would have a chance to pilot, implement, learn, and then we would be asked to scale across the district. So you will, the team is on schedule to bring you a recommendation prior to end of this school year for a curriculum that they would like to adopt for the six pilot sites. The Wallace Foundation helps support financially these first couple of years of the pilot, that is now longer a pilot, but the implementation phases, lessons learned, how do we do that more efficient and effective with the idea that we would scale out to other elementary schools as we go?
And what's the timeline for the scaling?
It is, the Wallace Grant is, they do not commit to a dollar funds each year, so we are a learning grant. And so there is a five-year commitment, and every year we enter based on the progress that we make, a budget request with our city partners, and they determine, based on the lessons they're learning, what direction and how far they want to go. So next year, we would go into the first six sites?
Has my time expired?
I have gone over my two minutes. I apologize.
Yeah, you went over your two minutes.
And at that phase, based on the Wallace recommendations, we would have permission to potentially go to the other six comparison sites and across the city.
So I appreciate the diligence with which we're deploying it, and I'm trying to balance that with the sense of urgency for need to have some sort of standardized curriculum. And I'll butcher it, but I'm looking at Dr. Leone, because I'm thinking about medical trials that are so overwhelmingly positive that they just say, "Everybody's getting it." So how do we balance, and I will caveat it by saying, eight years ago, and we've come a long way, I think it's hard to remember that there was a time where we had some vigorous debates around what can you teach kids, what should families be teaching kids, what can the school teach kids, what can the school hold kids and teachers and adults accountable for? So how do we bridge the gap between what the Wallace Foundation is providing and this demonstrable need and the seemingly efficacy of these programs that are being deployed?
So the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, social-emotional curriculum is one piece of the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative. And so a lot of the strategies that were articulated tonight were identified by local school staffs as part of the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, zones of regulation that's going across the district. And so one strategy, one curriculum is not the only solution, and as teams build out each of their social-emotional learning plans, every elementary school by district benchmark is required to do, they weave in practices across that are consistent from a menu of options from the Whole Child Department that are generated at the building level. So that's my way of saying, yes, we hear you. We, as part of the grant, when we signed up for this multi-year, multimillion-dollar partnership, we made some agreements. With that said, that is not the only piece, and we have seen schools across the nation that have implemented a SEL curriculum as the answer that have not had the same significant results. The teams at Fawcett and Edison and Lister that you heard from tonight, they were Whole Child champions before the SEL curriculum. Lister Elementary was working on theirs. Other schools are working on mindfulness practices, and so we are not saying that other schools cannot do SEL.
And so how are we going to support them? Because it seems like the Listers of the world can be force multipliers that can go into these schools and give them tools and resources now in a way that is consistent, so that there's continuity of what's being deployed district-wide?
Carla, did you want to comment?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, and vice versa. We have other schools that are teaching Lister staffs and the Edison staffs. And so through our Whole Child teams, we have common trainings across the board. We are continuing to develop infrastructure. We are doing shared SEL strategies and piloting those with our after-school partners. The counseling staff under the director of the Whole Child is developing common group supports across schools. The restorative justice practices go beyond these pilot sites. And so each of the pillars, there are elements of SEL Whole Child practices that go across the district, pre-K through 12.
And I appreciate all the good work that's been done, and I think it's a nice problem to have, that we have people that are asking for specific curriculum, that they want to be able to teach this, that they see value in it, that the kids are responding well to it, that it's improving academic performance and attendance and discipline and all of those numbers as well. So I, I'm excited, because this isn't the place where the district started this conversation. We've come a long way. We've been pioneering it nationally in many ways, and I appreciate the good work, and I urge us to continue to address these needs that we hear from our teachers and principals in our different school buildings.
Director Cobb?
I have a different question around scale. Principal-
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Oh, I was just, around scaling up the implementation. Principal Tuggle talked about the 30 minutes a day, five days a week of explicit instruction, but does a curriculum help facilitate, sell education integration into lessons all day long, or where are the pilot sites at with integration of social-emotional learning throughout the day in addition to the explicit instruction?
You bet. So self-awareness, one of our competencies, one of our standards in SEL, right? Zones of regulation is a strategy that goes in various schools. You'll hear kids' staff talking about it. We have middle schools that are actually piloting an online badging system where they're self-regulating their skills, and the team's looking at different tools to help coach them in live feedback. And so the curriculum is supported by shared strategies. That's also being built out in alignment with our after-school partners so that SEL practices are happening across the board. Another competency, social awareness. The work that our counseling staff is working in, I want to say CBT, but it's the wrong acronym in there, and forgive me, I don't have the exact piece, is about group strategies to work on empathy recognition in there. That's not a part of the curriculum. That's a part of our framework that we are building out. No book curriculum is providing this comprehensive approach. Part of the reason the Wallace Foundation wants to continue to work with us is we are teaching as well as we are learning from the other cities to say, SEL is not a placeholder, to Director Cobb's point, I believe, is SEL happens everywhere. And if we can intentionally align it and explicitly talk about it, then it does not become a set aside 30 minutes here. And so the team from Lister, they didn't have nearly the opportunity to give you all of the comprehensive approaches to reflective practices in the other competencies.
Other thing that I have noticed with our grandson, they are teaching it at the preschool, perhaps not in the way that, you know, is a curriculum, but it is there. I mean, and he's learned the right words about, you know, how I feel or how I don't feel, and about, you know, being kind, and, you know, and he's in a peer model preschool, which is special ed kids, and has learned a lot, and it's helped him work better with his brother, who is only 13 months younger, and, you know, he told his brother the other day, you know, "You're not being kind, Abel. That's not very nice." So, I mean, you see that, and that's what he's learned at school. So I guess, you know, we're actually doing it without the, you know, starting at that level, so that when those kids, as they go through, you know, perhaps we won't be seeing all the discipline things that we have and learning to deal when you get mad, what you do, you don't hit, you don't, you know that, and you help. And so it's pretty basic, but I've just been impressed with how he's learned to handle a lot of his emotions since he started last fall. And it's something that they do stress. My daughter-in-law volunteers at the school, and she said it's something they do stress, and, you know, working on that. And it is social and emotional. But, you know, and like Scott said, we've come a long, long ways because a lot of people didn't think that we should be teaching social and emotional learning. Well, having worked at Lister School and Sheridan School and Eastside Schools, we taught social and emotional learning every single day. We worked with the kids on, you know, learning to, you know, not haul off and hit someone, and how to deal with things. But we didn't have any curriculum. It was just based on, you know, common sense at that point in time, and identifying kids who needed help and families who needed help. And when I think about what that was like, you know, 10, 12 years ago, and where we are now, I mean, I think that's the, you know, sometimes the downside of being a leading-edge district like we are, or a leading-edge city like Tacoma was when I was there. And we forget how far we have come and how good we are getting. And I think sometimes we need to just kind of step back and say, "We're doing well, but we can do better and keep on doing better." And I know that we're all committed up here to making sure that every child gets what they need, socially and emotionally and academically. And, you know, we don't, we aren't have as much money as we have, but there are other ways to figure this out, and I know that we will, and we're in the process of working through all that. And, you know, we are the school, the state's only innovative school district, so we ought to be able to figure it out. So anyway, that's where we are. Are we ready to vote? Dr. Leone?
So the importance of this has been mentioned many, many times. So I'd like to just encourage us as a whole system to try to expedite the proven techniques that we have. The Wallace Foundation wants us to use the more proven techniques that they have given us as tools. I think that's a great idea to continue to do that. If there's anything we can do as a whole system to speed this process up with regard to, do we take resources from other places and bring them into, into this arena? I think it's critical. Many of you probably saw new, it's old research, but there's even new research that's come out, Nobel Prize-winning scientist that did the research on pre-K social-emotional learning in Michigan, that showed that those parents did better in life, so less incarceration, better jobs, more earning potentials. And it didn't only happen for those kids. It happened to the kids of those parents, even though they didn't have some of the same school universal pre-K system that they had. And they were teaching social-emotional learning pre-K. We're talking about the whole school time here. I think this is a value and a base that in many ways is so much more important than sometimes thinking about, we want to save physical structure, we want, you know, good math and reading curriculum, but this is a curriculum that is so basic and important. And we all agree with that, I believe, in this room. So let's put more effort behind this, and I'll help as much as I can.
Okay, great. Are we ready now? Okay, all those in favor of adoption of 11-3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Option. Item 11-4, approval of Office of System and School Improvement District Grant Proposal to the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Assistant Superintendent K-12 Support recommends the board of directors approve this request for funding in the amount of $480,000 to the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction for period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, and approve expenditure of funds according to accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve supplemental of grant to, or proposal, grant, it is a grant, proposal to the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is adopted 5-0. Okay, 11-5, approval of resolution number 2059, request for Tacoma School of the Arts, SODA, Science and Math Institute, SAMH and Industrial Design Engineering and Arts IDEA, 180-day waiver request.
Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the board of directors approve the request for waiver renewal for Tacoma School of the Arts, SODA, Science and Math Institute, SAMH, and the School of Industrial Design, Engineering and Arts IDEA for the 2019, 2020, 2020, 2021, and 2122 school year.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 11-5. Is there any questions or comments on this?
Is there any questions or comments on this? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted, 5-0. Right. Moving on to business matters, adoption of item 12-1, adoption of resolution number 2058, bank signatures.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution number 2058 and approve the updated list of employees who can authorize transactions on these accounts and authorize the superintendent and or designee to approve the plan.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions by members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Motion is adopted, 5-0. Item 12-2, approval, excuse me, approval of inter-local agreements for the 2019, 2020 school year.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Student Support Services recommends the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to enter into local, inter-local agreements with various school districts as listed here on for the 2019-20 school year. Funding source: Special Education.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments, members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 12-3, approve addendum number two for American Logistics Company.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve addendum number two to increase the contract for American Logistics Company in the amount of $400,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments, Director Hines?
Just a quick question. I didn't see the funding source.
Oh, thank you. Transportation funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted. Moving on, other business. Item 13-1, approval of yearbook services contract, RFP-B19014S.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to award the contract to Walsworth Publishing.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board?
Just one comment. I thought about this before and wondered, and I don't think we do, but yearbooks are a great historical record. So I just wonder about our history of, and collection of yearbooks. I know that Tacoma Public Library System has some from the 70s and 80s, maybe into the 90s, but I just wonder if as a district we think about or have thought about in the past keeping a copy of all of our high school yearbooks. I know that's a big archival thing, but I don't know. I don't know, I don't know the value either. Maybe I'm just one interested in it, but...
I can ask Joey.
Are you going to keep it with the library system so that we buy a copy?
Yeah, I know they have them in the, at the library, because I looked up, I'd never seen my dad's graduation picture from Lincoln class of 1926, and they had, had them going back to when they shared a yearbook, the first year Lincoln and Stadium did, 1914, that first graduation. And so, you know, it is, it's a really idea, but then you got to figure out where to store them. Maybe we can have something to, you know, do with the library and talk to the library, you know, and they've been helpful about making sure that they have, they have pretty much all the copies for all of the schools up through, you know, well up into the, you know, into the current, you know, putting them in there. So it might be a way to make sure that if they haven't got them, they can contact us. Because a lot of they get are just people donate them or throw them out and somebody finds them and brings them to the library and things. So I think it'd be a good idea. It's a good idea.
I wanted to say something about this, because Tacoma Historical Society also collects them when they're given to them. So they're repository for that also.
Well, I have a copy of Woodrow Wilson High School's first graduate, first, first, you know, yearbook. Sometime I'll have to donate that. They were looking for some of those, the Nova, the 1959 one.
Quick question. The cost is $375,000. How many books does that produce? Here's what I'm looking at. It's $30. The notification that I got for our kids, it was $30. I'm interested in the margin, and I'm interested in knowing how many kids purchase, because what we've tried to do in this district is remove barriers, and so is there an opportunity so that yearbooks are not means tested? And I'm hoping that we're not making any sort of profit.
No, actually, this is all run through the, I believe it's run through the ASBs. This isn't a district expense. This is, thank you, the vendor, the vendor covers the cost, the vendor charges what the book costs, and then I'm sure that there is a small profit, but I can look at what that looks like. This is just the estimated expense that will be spent with the, with the vendor. So we'll be issuing checks that'll end up, you'll have to approve those checks, so that's why we make it a board-approved contract. But I don't have that information on the top of my head.
Okay. I'd be interested to learn that in a Friday report.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted, 5-0. Item 13-2, approval of change order number one with Abshire Construction Company for additional pre-construction design services for Hunt Middle School Phase Two. Mr. Aldridge?
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve change order number one to the agreement with Abshire Construction Company for the Hunt Middle School Replacement Project and authorize the superintendent or designee to sign said agreement in the amount of $593,553.87, excluding sales tax.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any questions of Mr. Aldridge? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted, 5-0. All right. Number, item number 14, report to the board. 14-1, Strategic Benchmark Monitoring Report, Partnerships, Volunteer and Organizations.
So tonight, our Director of Partnerships, Ms. Amanda Scott Thomas, is going to give us a monitoring report, so these are not our end-of-the-year summaries. So you'll forgive us for our concise approach tonight to just give you summary data and where we are.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Santorino, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, Director Vial, and the rest of the Board of Directors. It's late, but you will be happy to know that every Toastmaster speech I've ever given, I've been dinged for speaking too fast. So go for it. We're going to roll through. All right. So this is a monitoring report. I was back before you in November and just giving you an update on where we are in partnerships. As you know, our goal around partnership is fully engaging parents, community staff, young people as well, and the education of our young folks. Our priority benchmark that we examine each year, and these numbers are end of school year 2019, so as you know, we have not finished the school year. But you can look at this data. We're at 7,012 volunteers. This data was pulled on May 13th, so the school year has not ended. And actually, we count our volunteer numbers until August 31st. So when I come back before you, I'll have the total numbers for school year ending 2019. You will see that there is a trend that we are decreasing in volunteers, but I've done some research. Anecdotally, we know that nationally, volunteerism is going down. People are choosing to volunteer in different ways, virtual volunteerism, but without a platform to collect data on our volunteers, which we, I'll get to in our key findings, we don't really have a way to give you explicit information about our numbers. But we're on track to be around the same rate that we were last year for volunteers. So I'm hoping that we hold steady there. Our key findings is that nearly 50% of the total annual volunteers are processed during the first couple of months in school, September and October. There was a decrease of about 1,300 volunteers in 2018 compared to 2017. And again, for 2019, we are slightly beyond last year's number for this time period. So we're looking to hold steady. Our next steps, we have our volunteer system, the online system that has been improved by Cabinet. That along with the Safe Visitor and VOMO, which is a volunteer management system, will help us better track our volunteer and be able to get better data on where our volunteers are. And we're hoping to, the volunteer management platform helps to retain and recruit volunteers. Again, volunteerism is moving a lot on a electronic platform. People are doing more on the web. And so with this social media approach, we're hoping to, again, attract more volunteers as well, be able to give you more information about our volunteers, who they are and what they're doing in the classroom. So the Safe Visitor and VOMO install is, we're facilitating that, so it's in progress. Right now, what's being created are training documents for staff that are going to be facilitating this change and staff testing. So before we put anything out to the entire district, we'd like to pilot it, make sure it's working, get out all the quirks, and put together a little team to do that. So that's happening. So volunteer engagement via the Continuous Achievement Plan and Process, again, that's a, that is work that will continue into this next year, that we will be supporting buildings around volunteer engagement and using these systems to secure and track our volunteer, our volunteers. For our formal benchmarks, again, year ending 2019, we're at 64 formal partnerships. We don't close that count up until August 31st. So we're looking actually pretty good, and we're probably going to close out higher than we were last year, which was 69. And when we say formal partnerships, these are new partnerships that were established at the beginning of the school, of the school year. You will notice that there was a jump in 2015, 2016. That was because of how we were tracking and measuring this data, as well as there were some inaugural programs, the Summer Jobs 253. We started counting Next Move Internships as those partnerships, so that's where that large jump is. And so you'll see we're at 64 so far this year of new formalized partnerships, so they begin this school year. The key findings are that the data reflects that we have new formal partnerships district-wide between the partnership office, which is exciting. We are deepening our engagement, as I have told you before. Partnerships are changing. We're getting partners through our partners, and so we're not having to formalize partnerships because they exist already, and we have partners collaborating together. But there's some exciting partnerships that are in development. We have a kids' mental health Pierce County, which was established by Multicare, that is bringing together groups and agencies dedicated to improving child and adolescent mental health treatment. And so we're part of that steering committee. We're working on a partnership with that group. Also Tacoma Completes, I'm the co-chair of the Tacoma College Success Network, and so we're working with our higher ed partners around college entry, retention, and completion. So the district is at that table. And then we're working on a partnership, this is interdepartmental, looking at lunch debt. So we know that our schools, at the end of every year, there are, there's families that have some debt around lunches. So we're looking at preventative measures, and we're looking at ways to engage communities around supporting kids that, and families that are garnering that lunch debt. And so Next Move and Summer 253 data is collected later in June, so I'll be reporting on that in the fall. We see greater engagement and partnerships focused on systems impact, so that's exciting work. And we have ongoing partnerships continuing to strengthen district initiatives through greater collaboration. Our next steps is to continue to focus on partnership and district goals in that benchmark data. So gathering that data for you around volunteers, we're putting the systems in place to do that better. Establish efficient and aligned dual-capacity family and community learning strategies across the district. And again, when we say dual-capacity, it's about meeting the needs of our constituents and changing our systems to meet those needs, not always putting the onus on families and communities. And then we will be finalizing the partnership family and community exemplars to support buildings for the continuous achievement plans. A lot of work and research has gone into those, and we're working on those, and I'll have more information for you at the beginning of this next school year. That was it. Any questions?
Great. Thank you. Andrea, we'll start with you. Director Cobb, good job.
Thank you.
I'm excited that you'll be participating in the CAP process.
Yes.
And with regard to our new partnerships or existing partnerships, in the future reports, I'd be interested in getting a sense of the alignment between the partnerships that we have and the goals of those partnerships and the needs and priorities identified through the CAP process. Like how well are those things matching up, and are there opportunities to maybe revise the focus of a partnership to better meet the needs identified through the CAP?
Definitely. That is definitely part of our purpose, and for all the partnerships that the partnership office specifically pursues, we have criteria that specifically focuses on our benchmark measures. But getting down to the building level, we can do that via CAP. Any other questions?
No, just that comment.
Director Hines?
Besides Multicare and Franciscan, health-related wise, do we have any partnerships with Kaiser Community Healthcare by any chance?
You know what? Kaiser may be at the table. This Pierce County Children's Mental Health Group is just newly formed, and so we've only had two community summits. So there are a lot of folks from different sectors that are at that table. I have not heard Kaiser mentioned explicitly, though.
We have numerous partners, though, with Community Life Resources and several other folks that are working in our schools for different opportunities, internships in the mental health and physical health arena.
Okay. Kaiser's just a leader in a lot of preventative work, so...
I can look into that, do a little research.
I have one question. So it just was brought to my attention, you know, we do background checks for people who volunteer in the schools, and the parks do background checks, but people have to go through two background checks if they're going to go do, like, coaching. Is there a way of streamlining that so people don't, you know, it's a cost to both groups or parents, a double dip? So could we look into that and actually talk to the parks and see if we can do some reciprocal?
I can check into that. I know that the cost associated is more with fingerprinting. So we give free background checks through the watch for just general volunteers, but there's another level which fingerprinting has, there is a cost associated. But I think that's a great idea to see if we might be able to partnership, partner to be able to defray some of those costs.
Yeah, so I don't know if theirs is more extensive than ours, but, you know, it'd be nice, but it's good for both if it's the same.
Definitely. And you said it was the Parks Department?
Yes.
Okay.
For, like, coaching.
Okay.
Can I add on to that?
Go ahead.
So, yeah, I think that we probably have the more stringent requirements for, because I don't think they do fingerprinting in some of these other, well, the parks. I've coached a lot of things, I've never gotten that unless it's new. So I think we want to just have a safety net for who we allow. And as long as the reciprocity is safe, where whatever they do meets our standard, then let's do it.
Yes. And all of our partners, as part of their terms and agreements, there's, there are terms as it relates to background check, fingerprinting, and so agree.
That's been a district policy for as long as I, you know, have been around. So the fingerprinting and the, you know, and the volunteers and signing in and having to go through all that to volunteer in a school or, you know, all that kind of stuff. So I'd hate to see us, you know, I agree with you on the safety net. And I think, you know, it's a pain, and I know it's, I think we cut down on some of the expense. I can't remember how or why, but we were doing some of it here and, but, in some places. But I'm, I think it's, you know, and that was, you know, part of what was going on. At the same time you did that, everybody has to sign in in a building, no matter who you are. You know, just things like that, that may seem nuisance, but they protect us. So I'm totally in support of that.
Two questions. Thank you for your report, and kudos to whoever opened the door or the window.
Yeah, it feels good.
Finally, the temperature lowered, which is nice. First question, I see the numbers in the aggregate for the volunteers and the organizations. What's the target?
The target for...
We have 7,000 volunteers. Do we have a target for how many we want?
So we...
What does success look like?
Success looks like for me, we average about 10,000 volunteers per year, and that has been our trend for about seven or eight years. And so to see those numbers decreasing, not that it may be negative, it might be positive. So we need to gather more information because we make data-driven decisions. And so our volunteers may be dispersed, they may be coming through our community partner organizations, but before now, we didn't really have a mechanism to really be able to track that. So with the online system, we'll be able to see where folks are. So our goal in our office was that 10,000 and increasing, because we want to get more community members into classrooms. But again, without the data, it's really hard to set a goal, so we'll be able to establish some baselines.
Okay. I guess, I don't have a second question, more of a comment to build on, Director Cobb, in alignment?
Yes.
I think that there's a great opportunity for us to determine what sort of volunteer individuals and organizations we need.
Yeah.
Because sometimes if, you know, you're, the target is 10,000, but if we got 7,000 of the absolute right people that we needed to achieve the outcomes we're trying to achieve, then that's a success.
Agreed.
And so as we think about our benchmarks, and I know we're coming upon a time where we're going to need to refresh our, revisit and refresh our benchmarks, then that sort of alignment. of alignment. So, I, I appreciate people and organizations that want to be a part of the district.
Yeah.
But just in the aggregate, having another partner, I mean, it's probably a good thing, but maybe it's not. Or maybe we have a void, and we need to make a, a direct ask to specific individuals and company skill sets and focus areas to come and be a part of it. And those are things, then, that, where the board can be involved as well. So, I, I, I'm excited that we have the technology coming onboard, 'cause I can only imagine what you're going to do with that technology. You, you've done great things in the last several years to grow the volunteers and the partnerships. And I think as we get more efficient and effective with the deployment of those volunteers and the organizations, it's going to be to the benefit of kids and families.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Great report.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Rosalyn, you're, you're up. Um, Item fourteen-two, Budget Update.
Thank you. I will also attempt to be somewhat brief, and I would like to just put some context around, uh, some things that Mr. Brown indicated, uh, were legislative impacts, as well as provide you with a brief update on where we're at and where we're headed. So, as far as legislative highlights go, you heard from Charlie that we have a twenty-five-hundred-dollar or two-dollar-and-fifty cent per thousand assessed value rate, and it's the lesser of either of those two. Uh, for us, those two rates actually come out to almost the same dollar amount. So, we will be able to collect our voter-approved levy, which is fantastic news. And thank you for everybody who participated in the, in the battle to get that to fruition, and it almost didn't happen. So, you know, frightening for us. Uh, we're thankful for that. As Charlie indicated, it won't kick in until January of 2020. And so, what that means is we'll receive fourteen million dollars of revenue in the nineteen-twenty cycle, but we won't get the full value of where we're at to where we will be until the following year, uh, 2020 to 2021. We do have the one-time hold harmless payment. As Charlie indicated, that was five-point-seven million dollars. A caveat I would add to that is, uh, when we talk through what this looks like with the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, there's still a little, um, there's still a little nebulous on exactly how the calculation works, and it's a fabulous bill to read. It talks about, you take number C minus number D, and number C is this plus that minus this plus this plus that minus that. So, I think it's one of those things where, uh, we're just waiting to see, uh, some stronger numbers from OSPI before we really, uh, settle in on what those numbers look like for us. Uh, special education funds, the, the formula changes that Charlie referenced are approximately two million dollars of revenue for us. We do spend about nine million dollars on special education, using our levy dollars. So, these two million dollars of new revenues from the state will help and potentially offset other costs within the Special Education Department, so that we don't have to dedicate as much of our levy towards those expenses. Um, we won't have a cut in, in expenses for special education. What we will see is that we'll fund it differently. Professional days, uh, we, professional development days, excuse me. The legislature added a day for teachers, uh, that is resources that'll be coming to us, as well as two days for paraeducators. So, uh, just a quick graphical representation of what the budget looks like, excuse me, what the levy looks like in our new budget. So, in seventeen-eighteen, with the levy and the LEA, which is the Local Effort Assistance, that's the property poor subsidy that the state provides to Tacoma, we received almost ninety-seven million dollars of revenue. In the eighteen-nineteen year, that dropped down to sixty-five million dollars, and the state couldn't fix our levy issue last year, so they provided us with those twelve million dollars of one-time resources. Now, in nineteen-twenty, you'll see that we'll have fifty-seven million dollars approximately of levy and five-point-seven million approximately of the, the one-time dollars, which is still lower than what we'll be receiving in eighteen-nineteen. But you'll see that in twenty-twenty, twenty-one, we'll, we'll have a recovery of those resources. It says seventy-one million. We're still working on some of those calculations, and I, I keep cautioning ourselves as we're talking, uh, within the district. Legislature only ended about two and a half weeks ago. So, it, it's, it's trying times because we're trying to make quick and difficult decisions, uh, but we still have a lot of work to do on solidifying numbers and verifying everything that we're doing. Uh, what I would add to that is, you'll see the dotted red line is if the legislature hadn't acted on our levy, we would have been in a much different situation, and we would have lost significant resources beyond the reduction that we already have to deal with. Other legislative impacts, uh, the state salary inflation, which is now called the Implicit Price Deflator, formerly known as Cost of Living Adjust- uh, Adjustment, that's slated at two percent for the nineteen-twenty year. And it applies to all of our salaries in the district. We will, we will have a two percent increase for all salary costs, but the revenue only comes for the funded units. And so, we currently have anticipated for next year, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two units, but we're funding closer to thirty-six hundred FTE. And so, the, the salary costs beyond what the state provides funding for, we will be picking up that difference using our levy dollars. Uh, for K-three class size, as I indicated earlier, we'll hire about forty-five teachers in K-three class sizes, uh, in K-three classrooms and/or as K-three supports, 'cause we don't have classrooms to fund every one of those teachers. But this will get us into compliance for revenues. And then, I will give you a detailed breakdown on our, um, SEB costs, the School Employee Benefit Board Program. Uh, what we will see, though, are all eligible employees, uh, occur at six hundred and thirty hours of work time, which is equivalent to around a point-three FTE. It's a pretty substantial health benefit. Uh, and it's unlike anything I've seen, it's better than what the Public Employee Benefit Board offers, which I believe those benefits start at a point-five. So, uh, it, it does have a significant cost impact for us, uh, as great as, as it is for the individuals who'll be receiving those benefits, and it, it really is a wonderful thing. Um, but this is really meant to be illustrative. This is data as of today, and, uh, we put it together trying to just strip out the different components that, that we have a cost impact associated with around SEB. The first line, I think, is, is really critical. These are the full-time state-funded units, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two of them. We will have a total estimated benefit cost of around twenty-four million dollars. We have no new costs associated with those. The costs we had before, the state will fund just the same way that they did in the past. So, there's no cost for that. However, when we start breaking down into the different components of other staff, units that are funded beyond the state at full-time, and then the next line, units that are funded within the state at partial time, we'll see close to about a five-million-dollar impact to our budget to, to cover the costs of those. And that is, is associated with the difference between what the state funds, or, or, excuse me, what the state rate required funding is now to what the state rate required funding is in the future. So, we'll have these two different rates that we'll have to make adjustments for. We don't currently cover the costs of those benefits. We will now have to cover the costs of those benefits. Uh, and then we have new eligible staff that weren't previously eligible in the past, people who we have currently offered benefits at point-five, uh, pro-rata. So, depending on what your current, uh, FTE was, you paid a share, depending on whether you were full-time or part-time. Part-time people paid a little more for their benefits. Now, they'll have full benefits, and they won't have to pay an added cost for that. Um, but we have a new group of people who will be eligible for benefits. That's about seven-hundred-thousand-dollar impact. And then, we'll have hourly workers that will, that, that were not currently FTE'd, they weren't part of our regular ongoing system. They could be coaching part-time, substituting part-time, but they work six hundred and thirty hours in the system, and they will become ben- benefit-eligible. So, uh, again, this is a work in progress on the cost associated with this, but I wanted to give some kind of, uh, understanding of what that looks like. When we start talking about our deficit for the nineteen-twenty year, there are many things that play into that, and we've talked through this slide a number of times at different presentations. Uh, we, we went through the legislative impacts already, but the, the internal cost increases, I think, is where we want to focus our time right now. Uh, naturally, people move up the salary schedule. They move from step one to step two to step three, and each year that occurs. That's about a two-and-a-half percent increase, two-point-six percent increase each year that the district has to fund as people move up the sec- the schedule. Additionally, uh, cost inflation around insurance costs, gasoline costs, um, you know, material costs, those all will keep rising, tariff costs. Uh, and then, we have changing laws like the minimum wage, uh, minimum wage change. And here in Tacoma, our minimum wage went from twelve to twelve dollars and thirty-five cents this year. We have to cover the cost of that. And then, we've talked about the Paid Family Medical Leave Act that is now in place. We have to cover the cost of those expenses. Uh, and naturally, every year, we have negotiated salary changes. That's part of the negotiated agreements that we work on with each of our bargaining groups, and we see those. Uh, we did have some that were slightly more, uh, increased than we've had in past years, and so, we have to make more room in our budget for those types of expenses. So, when we talk about budget balancing plans and how we're focusing our efforts moving forward on addressing our budget concerns, one of the things that we've already talked about a number of times are the cuts that we've made in the twenty-eighteen-nineteen year. We had a twenty-three-point-four million-dollar deficit in the current year, and we'd made reductions in deferred expenses in this year to help balance this year's budget. Some of those expenses, uh, have to actually, uh, move forward. So, things that we were able to defer in this year, we can't defer in the next year. So, we, we will only see fifteen or so million dollars of the cuts we made this year moving into next year. As far as our budgeting by priorities process goes, um, we, we will have to do a reduction of services program and staff in order to balance that budget down. We go through a budgeting by priorities process on a, a legislative cycle, so every other year. This is our full year of, of participating in that process. Uh, at this point, our, our plan is to eliminate just a half of percent of our certificated workforce, and not to call them out, but when I developed the slides, that was the number I had at the point in time. So, I apologize for, uh, not calling out all the other impacts, because it doesn't mean to diminish any particular group. Um, but that, at the time, was, uh, an anticipated expectation of nine certificated staff that would be impacted. And finally, we have utilization of our rainy day funds or our fund balance. Uh, we have a fund balance policy. The board has asked me to maintain at least the five percent policy reserve requirement that exists currently, which, uh, we have an anticipation, we'll have around seven-and-a-half million dollars of resources beyond that five percent to use to offset the nineteen-twenty budget. Just as a, a communication back around some of the planned budget interactions that we've had, we've done a number of community outreach activities. Uh, it is true that we have not spoken specifically about those impacts, but, uh, many of those impacts have been, uh, identified and communicated just in the last week and a half. So, I mean, from a timing perspective, we're, we're working as fast as we can to turn around what those impacts look like. Uh, we also held budget advisory committee meetings, um, study sessions out in the public. At this point, our, our intent is to do a budget adoption on July eleventh. It usually takes us about s- about eight weeks to balance out our budget after the legislature closes, and so, we're targeting, targeting July eleventh as around that six, eight-to-ten-week timeframe. So, that is what I had to present for you this evening, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Andrea?
Director Cobb?
I have two questions. One about special education funding. Um, I don't think you or Mr. Brown mentioned any changes to the safety net. Um, do you have a sense of...
Okay, I'll leave that off.
I don't. Um, uh, the other question was about the six hundred and thirty hours. I know there's still a lot of, of the mechanics of how that will work to be, um, worked through. Like, Mr. Brown referenced, if someone's working six hundred and thirty in two districts, who's going to be responsible for the benefits? But, um, how does that, what is the trigger? Like, if someone is an hourly employee, is it that they're scheduled for an average of so many hours each week, so you can anticipate that they'll hit the six thirty, or what? What's the trigger on that?
I, I think that we can absolutely work to try and identify. We already track hours for, um, ACA reporting or healthcare reporting that we do currently. So, there's a mechanism in the system for us to be able to monitor that and track what, where people are coming close and anticipate. I think that it's, it's probably a combination of many things. We have some people who are scheduled more regularly or, or, or doing more, um, frequent substitute work, so we'll be able to track that.
So, is the requirement that the benefits are provided in anticipation of them having that six, hit the six-thirty mark, or that they've worked it? So, are people becoming benefit-eligible midway through the school year, or are we providing it the day that they start?
So, in our first year, in our first year, my anticipation is that we will wait until they hit the eligibility mark. That's my anticipation at this point. In future years, where we have a history, or we have an expectation that maybe they might make it there, I think we'll have to work on what that looks like. So, um, and, and I don't know that we really have enough information from the healthcare authority to, to make a significant determination about that just yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Director Wensky?
I don't want to really prolong this meeting any more than I have to, but since we aren't having a meeting for a while, and you're going to adopt that budget, you know, mid-July. So, when I look at the money that we're going to get for small class size, I see some empty classrooms in our, in our district, which I think should be filled with small class size wherever we have space available. I, I just have to say that I don't know whether it's in our best interest to, like, hire an extra teacher or two for first grade and second grade, have them go into classrooms and help them with stuff, unless the teachers are on board with who they're hiring and have worked something out. So, I just, even, you know, we get matching money for that, and I, I just don't know that it's in the best interest of, uh, anybody without a plan in place that, where we ask a lot of questions about the efficacy of that. So, that's all I want to say.
Okay. Thank you. Director Heinz?
Yeah, thank you. And I, I build on what Director Wensky was saying. First, I want to say the Implicit Price Deflator, Charlie, that's terrible. We had Cost of Living Adjustment, and now it's impl- I don't, that, I think we got to explain to people what that is. So, I hope that as a district, we can plain-talk that, so people understand what that is.
The Cost of Living is what it is.
Right. So, I think we got to just call it out, so people know what it is, 'cause Implicit Price Deflator, I think, I don't know what that is.
I don't know who came up with that.
Uh, when we talk about the, so, building on Director Wensky, when we talk about K-three class size, is there a penalty for non-compliance?
Correct. We would actually lose revenue if we weren't going to implement the, um, institution of forty-five new positions. And that would be close to six million dollars.
So, for non-compliant, we would lose six million dollars. How are we for space as a district?
We've been analyzing that. Um, we, we, we know we're going to add some of those teachers back in as classroom teachers, uh, and we're working through what that plan looks like. Uh, there's a variety of options with which we're exploring. Go ahead.
Yeah, there's all kinds of innovative ways to do that. Uh, more PE music time. It's, it's not just the idea that we'd lose revenue, we'd lose a significant loss of jobs inside of our community. And so, the, the law allows us to support and serve, and, and Director Wensky's point is very critical, which is, is how do we do that in collaboration when we, uh, have two adults inside of a classroom? Um, and so, uh, we had a team that had worked on that with sixteen different individuals this year that had built professional development and frameworks before we've gotten to this place. Um, and so, where there is space available and where we can do, um, uh, add folks to, to those spaces, we will. Where there's other innovative ways, maybe we can do a, a maker space, where the classroom teacher actually comes down with their class and has, uh, that interaction there. Maybe it's extra music and PE than they normally were scheduled to. And so, we have gone through and looked at different options that are in authority and alignment with the law, um, to say, so what, is this a, uh, a, um, a, a burden or a opportunity to provide additional supports?
What's the timeline? We have to have it in place by fall of nineteen?
Uh, yeah. Uh, October first is really the, the significant timeline. We have a report called the S275, which is a personnel report that we have to report off to the state. And only those teachers that are in place on October first get to count. So, we have to have them instituted by that point in time.
So, where in our budgetary timeline can we anticipate seeing the plan? Do we have a date? I mean, is there a date identified, and are we, what is the thought process to work with the DEA and the community, and how we roll this out in a way that we're compliant and...
We're, you know, we're, we're working on it every day. And no, we don't have a specific timeline on when it'll be finished. We know when our deadline is, we know when we have to have it finished. Part of it has, um, has to deal with all the work we've been doing about trying to get to a place where we know, you know, we know who's displaced and, you know, um, you know, who's going to be on the classroom. So, it's, it's a work in progress. Some of it has to do with some of the, um, you know, what, um, Dr. Garcia talked about, about the, some of the innovations. So, we know that we're doing some different things, so that we could, you know, have people stay on and, uh, you know, work outside of their classrooms. So, I'm not sure if Lisa has a, a better underst- a better, can talk about a timeline, Lisa. I mean, I, but I just know that, you know, we're meeting two hours every day, working on, you know, working through this work.
Let me ask it a different way. If we, if you want us to adopt a budget by July eleventh, and we have to have our K-three plan in place by October first, does that mean you're going to come back to us to amend the budget?
No.
I'm just trying to get timing and sequencing square in my head, 'cause it seems like an awful lot of work in a short period of time.
It'll be incorporated in the budget. Yeah. It would be a component of the budget, and what, what we will ask from you is that we hire forty-five K-three teachers, period.
And you'll figure out how to plug them in.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All you got to do is make sure you got the money allocated.
Yes.
Uh, it's Director Cobb, sorry.
Just on this K-three topic, we've been using the word "compliance" a lot, and I think that's important for us to keep in mind, that it is a compliance requirement from the state. But I think for the public, and, and for all of us, and what, the rest of what we talk about is educational program decisions that makes sense for buildings and for students and for staff. So, if- So if every parent in the district who has a student in grades K through 3 doesn't see that their student is in a class of 17 students, I want to get ahead of that idea that everyone's going to be in that configuration because it's not what's going to result from this hiring of 45 staff likely. And I think it's important to raise right now because it's a matter of making things work where they are. And when we think about too, I understand for K3, there is some research, even though it's old study, that says 17 is a good number. But when we think about the gap in funding, once you hit seventh and eighth grade, middle school gets like the shortest shrift when it comes to state funding formula. So I think that when we think across the continuum of our pre-K through high school and what makes sense at each level and the different configurations, some of it is compliance that we have to hit. So we'll get there. But beyond that, I think we need to be focused still on talking about all the different strategies we're using, maker space and everything to make it work.
And not all schools are out of compliance. Some of our schools only have 17 kids and so on. And, you know, so it isn't going to be like all of the elementaries are going to get all the, get more teachers. It'll depend on what the enrollments and how that shifts out. So that's why we won't know what enrollment is either until, you know, September. And that's another little issue for us and, you know, that we have to figure. So the way you do that in the budget jargon is you just put the number in of the amount of money that you need and then you figure it out and allocate it out once you get started. Okay, or Director Leon?
So the special allocation for our special education money that we got, 80% of our students have to be in regular, 80% of the specialist students have to be in a regular class.
For the 2021 year, the rules will change around that, but not for the 1920 year.
And it's not 80% of our students. It's a student who spends 80% of their day.
80% of their time.
Of their time.
Of their time. So you could have one kid in a class who spends 80%, but you don't have to have 80% of the class.
Okay.
Okay, board reports and comments. I'm going to ask our student reps to go first. Will, you want to go?
Yeah. Since this is our last one, I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity. I've learned a lot and I've really enjoyed my experience. And like from a student's perspective, I know you guys definitely don't get enough credit. I just want to say thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Annika.
I would also like to really thank you all and the community for this opportunity. I've learned so much from the board and the district staff and everybody that spoke here. I think it's just been a really great experience for me as a high school student, and it has kind of made me even more interested in politics. So we'll see. I'll probably be studying music, but politics was definitely on my radar now and even more because of this experience.
I could tell that.
And I also wanted to invite you all to Mamma Mia at the Tacoma Musical Playhouse, which I will be in this summer. It runs July 12th to August 4th.
I'll be in there. Thank you, Annika.
Thank you so much. Thanks again.
Well, thank you both for serving and serving well. So really appreciate it. Okay, well, I will start with the state auditor's report. Yesterday, we had meeting of the Citizens Finance and Audit Committee, and the state auditor gave what they call their exit interview. And they come in and they have been auditing us since January, and it was the last year's audit and last year's financials. And what they came in with was a totally clean bill of health, as we call it in the jargon. And there were no findings. It was an unmodified report. And I think what is significant in that is that, you know, we heard people saying, well, we know that the school district misspent funds. No, the school district did not misspend funds. In fact, we were getting kudos for our management of our expenditures and our allocations in what we do. We also received a kudos in our monitoring of our federal grants. They moved us into a kind of an exceptional category there for the head start, and that helps us and other special ed stuff that we, in other words, we are well managed and we spend our money where it was allocated to be spent. And I think we can, one of the things I'd like to do as somebody that doesn't get, I mean, it was really nice to sit there and, you know, since I came on this board, we have had no significant findings. And there are very few school districts in this state that can say that, that they didn't have at least one. And that's been probably seven years, almost eight years of clean audits. And you look at Seattle, they got a significant finding again, and you look at others. And as Roslin said, we are only one of the six school districts in the state that uses the gap funding model, the rules and requirements for that. So if, you know, people can argue how we spend the money, but I was really disappointed when that started flying out that, you know, we all set up here and misspent money. No way has that happened in this school district. And it's not going to happen with the people that we have. And one of the things that Carla did when she came was hire Paul Walker to be our internal auditor, and we're one of the few school districts that actually has an internal auditor. And I think that's part of the reason, one of the reasons why we do as well as we do because, you know, Paul is constantly on the out, looking out for things and pulling things and auditing them and working with the state auditor's office. And they speak very highly of him. So I just think we need to, you know, pat our finance people on the back and our purchasing and everybody that handles money in this district because we do it and we do it well. And so I know my friend Brian Zondag, who is, actually, did some consulting work for his office when he was state auditor, said that Tacoma is an exceptional district. It's the only one that went like seven or eight years with no findings way back. So I think that's a kudo that we need to give each other, and I hope that the community, if you want to criticize how we spend that money, go ahead, but do not say that we misspent money because the person, the people that count in that respect are the state auditor's office. And when you get a clean audit like we got and you continue to get them, it tells you that your people are doing their work and doing it well. So we felt good after the state auditor's office left, and they said we'll be back in January next year because we are audited every year. And people don't, I think a lot of people don't realize that. We have a full audit every single year from the state auditor's office. And like I say, we're darn good at what we're doing. So that's all I have. Director Hines?
I just think what I've been reflecting on, this is my favorite time of the year as we get ready for graduation, and it's been a heck of a year. And I would encourage all of us to take deep breaths and really turn our attention to these students that are getting ready to walk across the stage and go on and do amazing things. Because in this district, we are all on the same team. We have different roles and responsibilities, but we are all in it for the same reason is so that the Annikas and Wills of the world can go out and do great things, even make misguided decisions like getting into politics. So I'm just especially appreciative of everybody's efforts this year, and I'm excited to welcome those kids and families in graduation ceremonies here in a couple of weeks.
I even got my gown cleaned.
I don't have a report tonight.
Director Leon?
Yeah, so I won't go through the detail of the school visits I've had recently, but I had excellent visit at Geiger, got to see the support, individualized education plan that exists there, excellent facilities. I'll talk more about it another day. Spent a lot of time with school nurses every time I go to all the different schools I visit, so I really appreciate the hard work they do and how short they are on the manpower there. And just seeing some of the kids with high needs that they're taking care of, kids with seizures, kids with special needs and feeding tubes and lots of insulin concerns and someone who sees us, you know, once a week, things like that, very serious issues that they're dealing with. So I appreciate their support. Fern Hill, I got to visit that school and learn a lot about their program and had their principal almost ring the big bell that's up there. They have this old bell that came from the original school there still. If anybody knows about that, I got to learn a little history about that. And I'll talk more about, I had a great visit at Foss too, so excellent visit there. And I'd like to just, it's Memorial Day coming up. I'd like to just have a moment just to appreciate our staff and their families who are veterans and are in the National Guard or passed away for all their service to our community and our country. So I think it's an important time of year to think about those sacrifices.
Thank you for that. I lost a cousin in Vietnam. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I have a report tonight.
Okay, with that, I will announce my future board meetings. There is no meeting on June 13th because we're going to be graduating kids. And on Thursday, June 6th, this is tentative, but we have scheduled an executive session for the superintendent's evaluation. And also Thursday, June 20th, another executive session to finalize the evaluation. So on, and then I will have a regular business meeting on Thursday, June 27th at 6 o'clock here. And with that, we're adjourned.